All right, hello, hello, the time is six o'clock. Welcome to briefing workshop in the Land Use City Council. Today is September nineteenth. It's six o'clock. And I can confirm that we do have a forum, so we can do business. At this time, we're going to, I guess, we'll go through each one. About the consent agenda, does anybody have any questions?
Do you want it?
Yeah.
For anyone have any questions on the consent agenda?
Joey, fourteen, we're good. We did our homework there and everybody's, you feel good about fourteen, which is the approval of cellular telephone and data service.
Absolutely, we've been with Verizon for some time, but our spend now exceeds fifty, so it needs to come before council, yes, sir.
Do we have an ORR app?
In fact, we do. Yes, we do.
Okay.
And it's got a cool name, what's it called?
Sparks. Sparks, all right, we're good to go then. All right, fifteen through eighteen.
That's part of the consent, too?
Yes.
So, do I have anything, then?
All right, good to go on that.
I do have a question about that. And this is simple. It's actually for you.
Oh, which one's that? Look up, gee.
You may, you may not know the answer, but I'm just curious if we, who does the approvals for the, like, fire alarm systems? I mean, that's what this is for, correct?
Yeah, so that, a part of that is the fire plans. And so, we have a contract that does some of that. We also have a person that's in staff this year that we're getting up to speed on some of those approvals as well.
Okay, all right, so that we do have an onsite person that can come and help, or can be onsite to help if someone is reviewing plans and, you know, show this is, you're gonna need an extra smoke detector here, or...
Yeah, yeah, so we've got a plan reviewer on staff. And so, a lot of the ones that get contracted out are just a first review, and then whenever the corrections come back in, then I'll review those. It just helps us to be able to keep things sped up through there.
Okay, so is it not feasible to have those plans approved in-house, or can we not do that?
Not at the speed that they're currently being done. It would slow us down.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna move to the public hearing, which is the proposed budget. There's probably gonna be a few questions here on this.
I have a couple of questions. Under the general fund expenditures, I'm concerned that only one new position, planning and one new position, engineering, is not gonna be enough to implement all the new legislative laws. I know you guys are very conservative, but I also know you are overwhelmed. So, I guess my question is for Robert. If we get two months into it and see that they absolutely, in order to stay in compliance, need additional employees, what's the mechanism to do that?
Budget.
Okay.
Come back with numbers, people, and ask for amendments to the budget.
All right.
Which may well happen. I mean, could well happen.
I had a question about personnel mark. Originally, you had had an events person, and since Heather's gone, he's gonna move into that role.
We just hired our recreation supervisor, Leah Ward. She comes from Longview, Texas, Longview Parks and Recreation, so she starts on September thirtieth.
Okay.
So, that was, that was a supervisor position. We did ask for a coordinator position and were not funded this year.
Okay. On that note, before we leave out, should there be more, I guess, cooperation or working with the PIO's office on that, as far as events go? And if he's getting an assistant, would that be something that that person could help coordinate? So, maybe that's a Gordon question, or Mark.
Not sure, but Parkford with Mike and stuff on the PIO department?
Yeah, I mean, it seems to cross over a lot of times.
Cause he advertised a lot of things through that, and then Mark. He does, we, we give him basically the information, and Mike has been assisting us for a year and a half or more, since he's gotten here to produce all of our flyers, posters, website. There's a few things when it gets down to Facebook blast and things like that that we do, but we take basically everything that he has been working on to do that, if that makes sense. So, we work very hand in hand with each other. If he's here, he can collaborate, I guess. But I know that I'm just one entity, too. There's police and fire events and programs and things that go on, so...
We were talking about the interaction between your office and Parks regarding events, since they're not gonna be hiring a specific planning coordinator, you know, or events coordinator. Is that something that your office, you know, with the new person you're bringing on, may have more of a role in, or?
I don't know if I'm bringing on a new person at this point.
Oh, I thought you were, I thought that was.
I think it was one of the...
You requested, but it isn't. It's not approved, didn't make the cut.
Okay. Bad news here, Mike.
Is, is there...
Mike has to work on it.
Is there a way on our city calendar to show what all the different departments have going on, so there's one place for fire, for police, for parks, for, you know, like the Patriots Memorial event? I know some of these aren't, I guess, put on by the cities, but it would be nice to have one place to check those.
It would be difficult to do like a community-wide calendar, where people outside the city would be posting events, but for all of our various departments, we do try and put those on our city calendar. I think primarily they are marketing, those different departments are marketing the events through Facebook and Twitter, so a lot of the details will come on those pages. And the city calendar is simply a placeholder for those, so we can actually, one of the things we can do is add links to those calendar posts, that point to the Facebook page or Twitter page that has every detail.
That would be great. I know for me personally, it's hard for me to scan everyone's different departments and find out what's going on, and I think that'd be awesome.
Recommendation here is for two motions, is that correct? I'm just trying to read this correctly, too, on the recommendation, to clarify the property tax increase reflected, and then also the group budget.
Yes, that's, stakeoff requires two, two steps.
So, I'll jump, I'll jump in.
Twenty?
Go ahead.
I'm done.
Oh, so on page fifteen, the capital improvement projects, are we gonna have a workshop to review those that are currently underway, where we have the breakdown of the start date, when the contract was let, how many amendments, what the, you know, cost is? Are we gonna have a workshop for that?
We don't have anything planned. We are planning with the mayor's direction and scheduling a, the unfunded list, projects that are recommended by staff to be included in the CIP, but we don't have a funding source for. And when we, when count, when staff presented the CIP in August, council asked that we have a work session on those projects. So, some of those projects are very urgent to us now, to the staff, and we'd like to have that as soon as possible. Is the fifteen still a good day?
I don't know what we can talk about. Can we get a list of those projects so we can research the ones that you need now? So, we don't have to make a rash, quick decision?
Yes, yes, absolutely. There will be, there'll be information prior to the meeting, and then what we can send out immediately tomorrow is the, the list. Now, the backup won't be with that, but it may spring some, some ideas on some of those projects. It'll be a full-blown agenda, meeting with backup and to go over.
Is that the same list that Judy gave us, any meetings ago?
Early August.
Okay.
We can package that up and send that out tomorrow.
We'll check, too, but I think Wayne sends out the current projects monthly, and their status.
Does it have the breakdown, you know, on that CIP binder we had, that each project has its own sheet that shows all the details?
It doesn't have that, it has a summary of all actions, you know, from every, every amendment or engineering contract, every amendment to engineering contract, every construction contract, the amounts, the dates, any change orders or anything like that, that are, that are, you know, the chug guys see, some of the change orders that are, you know, minor, three or four thousand, you may not pick those up, it'll just be in the totals, it won't be listed per se.
Sure.
But that's in the monthly report. We're, we're gonna update that, that format's been there for about four years now, and we wanna try to modernize that a little bit, make it more readable and easier to understand.
Right.
We had, we had some terminology in there, like change orders, that we're referring to engineering contracts, and that's improper, that's improper terminology, it should be contract amendments.
Okay.
So, so you should, for all the current projects, we are supposed to be giving you a update every month.
Okay.
And I believe it's in, I believe it's in your package.
Okay.
This time out.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, we're ready to move on? All right. So, item twenty, any questions dropped down?
Five years till midnight, in a sign.
Do we always go five years, that far out?
For this type of use, so when it's, there are these to take care of sick people, that's usually only a year, but this type of use is commercial, so usually we do five.
So, what was P and Z's reservation?
So, there were two motions. The first one, they motioned to approve it, and they ended up with a denial. Their concern was, three people from the neighborhood showed up, and they didn't want the music late at night, cause they lived there.
Had they done the sound checks, had they walked out and checked the decibels?
The residents?
No, no, the P and Z.
No, they don't normally...
So, what'd they base their decision on? Cause I went out there with a decimal meter, and the cars were louder.
Sure, it just, it was the residents' concerns, so the people's...
So, they just made an emotional decision? I'm done, I'm done. I striked my last comment. They just made it because three citizens...
Whoever's recording this, strike his...
Without, any, without any, without any research at all. Okay, thank you.
I don't think the P and Z commission has a decimal meter.
Right, I mean, it, when you have neighborhoods show up...
I mean, they don't routinely do it, if there's a noise complaint, I think the P and Z would do that, but...
Okay.
Was it mentioned that the police have been called out and measured and come first?
She brought that up, yeah. I just think the, the people were concerned, cause they live there, and they don't like to hear the music, so...
And were these three individual residences, or were these three people in one residence?
I think it was two homes.
Okay.
I think it was a married couple in, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, at Hot Spot, you know, they used to get a lot of complaints about it, and there's a way they can, I guess, direct the sound, where it's...
I think they do that now, and then you can hear it better at the La Tapatilla restaurant than you can at this street.
So, the way they're orienting the speakers is supposed to be towards the creek, so...
Yeah, north, right?
Right, yeah, and I think that was her goal, and the commission talked about ways to soften it, but it sounds like she's doing everything she could, so, yeah.
I could just play Frank Sinatra, but I don't make you sleep.
I think one of the people has a job where they have to leave at four in the morning, there was something like that, so...
On Sunday, or Saturday?
That's just what she talked about, so I didn't, yeah.
Sure, I understand. It's a, I would consider that.
Oh, and we've provided, they had letters of support, those have been passed out.
And those are people that are other property owners?
She collected those, yeah.
So, it's probably gonna be coming up again with a new restaurant that will have music at some point?
If they request a change to the, might be, depending on where they're located, they may not have people within two hundred feet to get notice, or see signs, you know?
Like residents?
Yeah, yeah, so if it's, if it's over here, it's, there aren't people living there in the area.
What about the sign, is it across the road that they wanna put the sign?
It'll be on their property.
Okay.
It's just a sign type that's not permitted.
Okay, all right.
And I think that our, the staff's recommendation was to include they would comply with the sign ordinance with regards to not flashing, strobing, those kinds of things.
Is that okay? Feel good? All right. Twenty-one, questions?
I have, I have a couple of questions on this, on the PUD notes. It says under D two, that there's a maximum of twenty-eight tow units in it, right? But then the parkland, but there's really only gonna be eighteen.
They amended it at the DICE, and they said they, they weren't gonna be able to build the twenty-eight.
Okay, and so, that's why the parkland mitigation is on eighteen units. And as far as the road impact fee or any tree mitigation fees, that's later on in the development stages.
Correct.
Got it. Cause there are a lot of trees on it.
Sure.
Some of the main concerns were the condition of the road and what would happen on the road, too. And I mean, this project does this, and it's more, more traffic on there, and then it sets precedence for the rest of them, from listening to feedback and actually driving through there. And so, are there any plans with, anything special planned on that road?
I don't think it's part of the current CIP, Horizon Park.
What, what?
They're talking about Horizon Park Boulevard, and when that'll be upgraded, like the roof. They'll have to pay into the funds.
I'd have to look, see where he is on the schedule.
They'll pay into it, right?
Yeah, I don't think it's in the five year...
I would imagine that after X amount of people are...
I think we're, I believe we're counting on the development to drive the improvement of that.
Right.
At this particular point.
And this would be our second collection, so we, we got funds from Starlight Village, and then this group would contribute, so...
The one that we reasoned, when we allowed them to, like, recently, too, did they also pay into that as well?
That was, um, single family.
Single family.
Right, and it was one lot with a home on it, so they didn't have to replod or anything.
Okay. It wasn't really, recommendation was kinda like to review the notes and kinda do it for ourselves, too, but as far as planning departments, are there any concerns with, with this going in and then setting the precedence, and then that happening all the way down the street?
I think it, it does provide for higher density, and it does start a chain of events.
Right.
It's hard, the future land use map supports residential, and they chose the single family category, so it's supported by the future land use map.
So, I also see that there's never gonna be, go build a big, nice home there, backing up to general commercial.
Sure, it's actually heavy commercial, right?
Heavy commercial, yeah, so, and that's just knowing the market there, that's not, I don't have any of that.
This is probably an area where someone would have to come by a handful of lots and redevelop it.
Kind of separate, yeah.
Right.
And then maybe do something, some division, something like that, yeah.
Almost like Starlight Village did, they took two lots and put twenty-eight units, which is still kind of a lot, but this group has half the size and was proposing the same density of starlights, so it was challenging.
Okay.
And this one, we have quite a few letters of opposition that came in that have been handed out.
And they're mostly from across the street, more?
Oak Ridge, right.
Okay. Yeah, it was confusion of two or three apartments, but it worked.
Overlook Estates is the other one, and it was more Oak Ridge, cause Overlook Estates is further north. These are directly across. They did, the HOA president did show up to P and Z from Overlook.
So, just to clarify, was, were there also three parking spaces that was finally, finally determined, it was going back and forth, but it looked like three parking spaces was the final deal, and they were going eight units per acre, which gave them...
Three spaces minimum.
Nineteen, whatever units, was that, eighteen units? Okay. Okay.
Well, I'm curious, how does this pass the fire?
So, they don't, they don't necessarily review the zoning. When it comes in with the site development, that's when fire looks at the number of units they're proposing off of an access point.
And just one ingress egress?
That's what's being proposed here, so if they said they wanted to do fifty units, fire would say, we have a problem, right? Cause it's over thirty, and it's just not at that stage.
Okay, so over thirty units is when you need to ingress egress, is that...
Depends on, this is a single family, is that right?
It's detached and attached, so it's...
So, I believe it's thirty, and then after that, then you've got a couple of options to either have a secondary egress, or you can, there's some code equivalencies that you can develop.
Okay.
We're good? All right, so we skip over twenty-two to twenty-three.
I'm good.
Okay. Twenty-four.
Same property, yeah.
All right, so we move to the regular agenda. Twenty-five.
So, this is the one that's pulled off of consent last time, we didn't have a development unit signed.
Now we do.
Now we do. Nothing's changed.
I just had a quick question, on the PUD notes, again, page four, when it talks about the perimeter block length requirements, I thought those perimeter block length requirements were just for the smart code area.
That's the whole city.
Is that the A, B, C streets also? No, it's something separate, okay, thank you.
So, the smart code has smaller perimeter block length requirements, the city contracts.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're good on twenty-five, twenty-six. So, we're sticking with the tax rate?
Taxes, please.
Okay, so that's twenty-seven, so twenty-eight.
No, on twenty-seven, the amendments, excuse me, on the amendments, are these reflected in our budget, that we've been reviewing these amendments?
This, this is the amendment to the current fiscal year?
Oh.
The twenty nineteen that we are...
Yeah, these are going, finishing, closing.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, so twenty-eight on the comp plan?
What was our budget on this? What did we start, does it start in the point?
Said one fifty.
We budgeted one fifty.
And so, we're already forty-eight, that's forty-nine over.
Where did the one fifty come from?
Just an estimate. Yeah, that's what we paid in twenty fifteen, so we did it in twenty fifteen.
Okay, so, that's how much we spent five years ago, when our city was population of forty thousand or so, probably? And inflation?
I can't talk about the previous one, can I?
Yeah.
The previous comp plan?
No, nobody cares. No, I can't.
How much was the previous comp plan?
It was about a hundred and forty-seven or a hundred and forty-eight. There's a, there's a nuance there, though, we went about that procurement differently, we RFP'd it, rather than an RFQ, and in an RFP, price is a consideration, and we disclosed our budgeted figure in that effort. So, firms came in at that budget, they came in with a budget. We RFQ'd this for a number of reasons. It eliminates price from the consideration in terms of your scoring, so then, once you do have your high score, you begin negotiating. It's a little, little different approach, I think that's why that's where we are. But we've worked hard to trim anything we can with half assistance.
I know y'all, we know y'all have done incredible work here, that's not, my concern is, what, so the starting point was one fifty on the previous, what was the actual?
It was just shy of that.
Okay.
No, no, there's, there's a couple of things that they've not agreed to do, too, like as far as the branding was one of them, right?
Correct, at our last reading...
There was extra money we could pay towards that.
Branding was a curiosity of council, to see if it was available, they don't offer that.
Okay.
And amidst the conversations, Old Town Master Plan had been discussed as well, and that was added fee, which no one seemed to have a desire to infer at this time. It's council's prerogative to, as you progress over twelve months, see if there's a component to this project that you wanna do a deep dive on, you can change order to contract into that, so you reserve that kind of game time decision to get that done if you need to.
And so, we're gonna be making a motion on which option we want?
You can, we're bringing forward the recommendation of one ninety-eight with the contract that's proposed, but we did provide all of the negotiating backup, so you can see what was pulled out. If you'd like to touch on that now, we can.
Does that need to be over two budget cycles, or...
Can we talk about that?
No. Okay.
So, what came out, so everyone is clear, it was discussed to remove an open house, and at, at first Blashstaff was uncomfortable with that, I think two open houses seemed appropriate as public engagement, was very important to everybody. There's a bit of a personality named Chet Gardner, who has... Day Tripper! Day Tripper is a blog or TV, or YouTube, or something. His participation has been trimmed out. A summary plan step, just things that, that have thought they could be more efficient on. A half-hosted website has been removed, Mike New will be hosting, you know, he'll help promote through his channels. One of their subs, Catalyst, their scope has been reduced a bit, and one of their staff members will be here tonight, should you have any questions at the podium.
I do, cause that seemed very important to us.
No problem, and again, your prerogative as to, you can include that, should you need to. And then there is a land use charrette and planning session that was pulled, it was a day long. Again, these are our best efforts to contain costs for you.
What was the other one, upper end proposal?
They, we started at two thirty-eight.
Two thirty-eight?
We started at two thirty-eight, we're at one ninety-eight right now.
Joey, I'm sorry, you said there was two, originally we had two open houses, and now we're just gonna have one?
There were two, in our negotiations, one came out, we're back to two.
We're back to two. We are, okay, so the last time we did four, wasn't that right?
Do you know, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. It looks like it was four.
Okay. I feel like we had, they had meetings with HOAs, and, right, it was a bunch of groups, like the school district, utility, so they did, it was in a different way, but they had...
But they were all here, right?
Yes, yeah, but it wasn't like a town hall meeting setting, it was just... Sure, so, yeah. But there are a number of, of other stakeholder meetings in the schedule, it's not just two get-togethers and, and that's it, there's a pretty comprehensive schedule here.
I felt like one was not enough, but having two, at least options for open houses, good.
Absolutely.
Is there a possibility that, like, we could run one ourselves and get feedback and things like that, or...
I guess we'd have to talk to half about that, so it'd be us collecting data for them and giving it to them, that would be something to discuss with them.
Can we pay you to work for you?
Well, if we give them the data, I don't know.
I think we probably want them to, just to keep it third party.
You can do it.
All right, any other questions?
Yes, I'm sorry. On our last comp plan, the future implementations spreadsheet we see here with the transportation plan.
Yes, is it the graphic here?
Yeah. And the parks master, weren't those included in our content?
I'm so glad you brought that up. In the now month-long conversations that have surrounded getting this project going, there's new leadership on the dais, new leadership on staff. There's just a lot of conversation as to what the plan includes and what it doesn't include. And this slide will be put up to clearly expectation set for everyone as to what their deliverable is. That deliverable, our best description, a guiding document that outlines your high-level goals, your economic development objectives, and your aspirations for community development. It's a guiding document. But Marcy, it does not deep dive into a parks master plan or your access management. It, it, it doesn't go that deep. So if the initiatives come out of that guiding document that those are needed, currently there's, I want to say fifteen of them that exist on.
That's what I thought, is we already had a bunch of them.
A lot of those you have.
We just did a really big.
Appendices to those comprehensive plans.
That's, they were added on to that.
Right, and then there are action items in the plan that guide creating those documents.
Yes. Okay, perfect.
Yes, okay.
And is it something where, like merging the parks master plan with the comp plan? Is that something where you would be working with half to do that to?
I would, I would assume that's exactly what they would want to do.
But I don't think the parks plan doesn't become part of the comprehensive plan. It's still an appendice, too, so.
Good point.
Yeah. We would want to make sure that the objectives in the comprehensive plan worked with the parks plan and we weren't going off in the wrong direction.
Everybody good?
I mean, me being new to this, is anybody not happy with, with what we're seeing so far? Through either negotiations or through what are, what we're actually going to be getting out of this, out of this plan? Is anybody, I don't know what else to ask besides that? To make sure, like, that if I'm going to raise my hand, that I'm going to say, okay, yeah, we're in good shape here? And I don't know what our options are if we weren't in good shape, so.
Your options are, as you progress through what is a twelve-month proposed project timeline, your options are, should you, you know, complete a step and feel you need a deeper dive, you have the option to add on, correct? So that's, that's up to leadership to kind of gauge that progress.
Okay. So is any, any department, after seeing the graphic or knowing what we get, is it, does this seem like we're getting, getting what we're paying for?
Yes.
Yes?
Do you have a line item as to how much it was going to cost us? I just saw it, which I can't believe I could actually see it. And I found it, fifty-five hundred additional to expedite it from twelve months to ten months.
You know, we, we went back and forth on the ten to twelve. There was an expedite conversation and there was the extra open house conversation. And I think that played into the, we pushed for a truncated timeline. Yes, I believe that, that facilitated that longer timeline.
Yeah.
Yep, it's a pushable on anything.
So what happens if we approve it tonight? And what's the next step?
Scheduling will begin. Start to work.
And do we start taking applications for the citizens portion of that?
Robin, you'll have a better platform on that than I will.
I think last time we worked with the consultant to, to figure out the goals of what they wanted in the stakeholder group. And then we kind of came up with, we wanted different parts of town, you know. They're, whatever they're looking for, then we opened it up to applicants. We don't want everybody from one area, so.
All right.
Thank you, appreciate it. Can I clarify why I was asking that, too? Just really quickly, I'm sorry. Because we had two that were very close in numbers, right? And just me, me asking was not a, I don't want it to be construed as a, me questioning you or anybody else on staff. I just want to make sure that if we had somebody else that was right there, is there another mechanism to make sure we're getting the best deal and the best service for what we're, what we're going for?
In any RFQ scenario, there's always that consideration in the back of your head when, when negotiations.
Sure.
Perhaps, I want to say, didn't go the way we wanted to. You know, they went the way we wanted to, but, you know, we had to trim a few things. You do think about firm number two, of course. But there's no guarantee that firm number two would not be the same price, if not more, you just don't know.
And because of the process we're in with RFQ versus the.
Correct.
Okay.
We can't negotiate one against the other. Yes, sir, here we are.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to twenty-nine. Renaming County Road, Troy Hill Road.
Oh my gosh, no.
Same, anybody does.
Motion to die.
It is a straight road, it's not very crooked. So North Baghdad. Do you have an idea how many people this would affect?
It's going to affect fifty-two addresses. It's going to affect thirty single families, three commercial. Will affect a cell phone tower and the three carriers that utilize it, the tower. There's two trailheads and restrooms, two signs. And Sean has down here seven in two places, others, seven. I don't know what others are, but there are fifty-two total addresses affected at this point in time. Everything north of Waterfall is addressed as County Road two seventy-nine. And so what we are doing is, we're going to have everything within the city limits. Except for, if you look at the map, where you see Fong Ridge at the very north end of the city limits. We did not annex the adjacent rights away there. So that, that address or any addresses on Fong Ridge or adjacent to Baghdad there will not, will not be changed.
We didn't annex?
Basically, up to County Road two seventy-one is going to be the Baghdad name change.
We didn't annex them, but are they under development agreements?
I don't believe they are. I believe they're single family lots or ranches. Not, the, I don't truly know the answer to your question, but I don't believe that they're involved in any development agreement. I believe they were annexed long ago before we had that process in effect.
All right, and numero thirty.
All right. So does everybody have a copy now?
Yes.
Okay. Basically, so this is, this is in conjunction of what was presented last time, but we, we had that council was a procedure and there was also an ordinance amendment. It was part of that, which I was working on with our city attorney and our city secretary. We just, we weren't sure on a couple of things last time and it wasn't prepared. So that didn't get presented as long, along as our second document last time. Here, we, we had, the whole time, we've been asking for feedback from all council members to be given in. And we did get some a little bit later, information, too, as far as how, like, on something we could possibly amend here. And so we thought that was worthwhile, because we're working on all these things together. So essentially, what we're trying to do here, to, in summary, would be to, to effectively be able to conduct a business meeting. And so we're trying to put things in place that would help us to effectively run a business meeting. Since that's what the city council meeting is supposed to be about. So I'm open to any questions or anything, too. I know Paige is here to answer questions as well. And I know there's, I'll just acknowledge a concern for people not getting this information soon enough. And I'll take as much responsibility as anybody else, and Paige and I, we're trying to get it right. And this isn't a situation where anybody's trying to not bring something out or to hide information. So I have no problem standing up. And if it's something that council is not comfortable, because we just got some of the final things going here, there's basically a couple of questions, I'll go through those. If you're not comfortable making a decision because we just got it, I'm okay with whatever you need to do here, too. But let's go through the couple of things. I don't think it's as complicated as, as what I think it's probably going to be perceived as. So go ahead.
Before you go there, stop me if I start saying what I can't talk about. We can't debate this right now. Yeah, I'll wait, I'll wait up there, yeah.
Yeah, this is like the Q and A.
Yeah, sure, sure. Is it, so here's my question, Paige. Is it possible that we can throw this out, let the public look at it, let them make a determination, and then bring it back on the next council meeting to actually vote for the passage of it?
Yes, and if you have comments on it at the meeting today, and you've gotten comments, you get comments between now and.
Sure, and we will, we will.
And then whatever direction council give.
Yeah.
Discussion and direction and we could get you something that's in time for you to have a better.
I don't, look, I read it, I'm, I'm okay with it, it should, they need to see it. They need to see, see it out there.
Well.
We got to be careful.
Look, I just, I feel like I need to read the, the new law. Because, you know, it's funny, because I started looking through different cities, what different cities have today. And in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, there was a big move by cities to actually do away with public comments, right? So the law takes, the law happens this year. And this is the law, House Bill, oops, House Bill twenty-eight forty by Representative Terry Canales is effective on September first, twenty nineteen. The bill amends the Texas Open Meetings Act to provide that a governmental body shall allow each member of the public who desires to address the body regarding an item on an agenda or an open meeting of the body to address the body regarding an item at the meeting before or during the body's consideration of the item. Before the passage of the bill, the public have only the right to observe rather than speak at an open meeting of a governmental body. So I think the intent, in my opinion, of the bill was to, to allow people that came to a meeting like this where there are items that may affect their own houses, could be a zoning bill, it could be anything, but, you know, they weren't allowed to speak on it, or it got pushed to the end of the meeting and some people weren't able to attend. I mean, this clearly says it's on the agenda. And as I started looking at other towns, there's a lot more cities that do it this way than the way that we were doing. Whether it's, you know, you don't speak on the item tonight, but you request that it be put on a future agenda. And there's a lot of cities that do that. Or you strictly speak on items that are on the agenda. So I think that's, that's really important to remember as we do this, that, you know, there's, there's a lot of cities out there doing this very thing and have been for a long time, including cities run around it, Georgetown, Hutto, San Marcos, they all do this. So we're not out on a limb here. Fort Worth is one of the biggest cities I've found. Again, I just found these all today. So, you know, we're not out here doing something that other cities have already been doing for a long time. So I think that's important to remember.
Not the red line version.
Do you want to hear, just, do you want any other information as far as? I think it's whether we, whether we make a motion on something or not tonight. I think it's important, like, we're all here talking about it and it's all in front of us. And I would be more than happy to, regardless of whatever we do, just to answer questions.
Yeah, I think we should stop here and.
When people are here.
I think it's also, I want to be on record of saying it's people's decision to be here or not to be here. So I think that needs to be noted as well.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, September nineteenth, the time is seven oh two. This is a regular meeting of the Leander City Council. Councilman Shaw will be providing the invocation, and please remain standing for the pledges of allegiance.
Father God, thank you so much for the you are. Praying your spirit upon us, on this day of our lives. The calmness head will prevail, and that we will look to you for guidance and to build upon your guidance. And we will look to each other as we are all of your children, and that we will always be loving you, Father and Son. Amen. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. At this time, Dara, if you take your role.
Councilmember Catherine Battalion Parker, here. Councilmember Michelle Stevenson, here. Councilmember Jason Shaw, here. Councilmember Christine Settlecris, here. Mayor Portier Chris Ernig, here. Councilmember Marcy Cannon, here. Mayor Troy Hill, here.
We do have a quorum, we can do business. At this time, we're going to move to item six, public comments. I do have some people signed up to speak. You're going to have three minutes. You're going to give your name and address and when I call you up. First is Stephanie Burque.
Thank you, council members. My name is Stephanie Burque, I live on Champion's Corner in Leander. Thank you for taking time to listen to me tonight. As in the last meeting, I'm here to discuss the importance of free speech and free access to the library space by the community. Next week is banned book week. And I'd like to take a moment to highlight a book, which was challenged in July of two thousand and eighteen, according to the American Library Association. All American Boys by Jason Reynolds and Brendan Kiley. It is available in the Leander library, there are two copies. She pointed down to the paper in my hand, a block quote from Desmond Tutu covered the top half of the sheet. "If you are neutral in situations of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor." There were other white kids like me and Jill, black kids like Tiffany and Tumes, Latino kids and Vietnamese kids and multiracial kids, and kids I didn't know at all and didn't know how they identified. And I thought about what English had said to me about how many times I had been a bleep without knowing it. And it made me wonder how many times I'd remained neutral in the past, too, and what that meant. What did Dad do? He ran right into the face of history. I couldn't duck now just because I was scared. I repeated it to myself like a mantra. I was marching, I kept saying it as I scanned the crowd for Jill, pumping myself up, because some people had told me racism was a thing of the past. They told me not to get involved, but that was nuts. They were nuts. And more to the point, they'd all been white people. Well, guess what? I'm white, too, and that's exactly why I was marching. I had to, because racism was alive and real as bleep. I was everywhere and all mixed up and everything, and the only people who said it wasn't, the only people who said, "Don't talk about it," were white. Well, stop lying. That's what I wanted to tell those people. Stop lying, stop denying. That's why I was marching. Nothing was going to change unless we did something about it. We, white people. We had to stand up and say something about it, too, because otherwise, it was just like one of those posters and the crowd outside the school said, "Our silence is another form of violence." And as I heard them, my mind sort of split in two. One part listening and the other part picking apart ideas I'd been kicking around in my head all day. Would I need to witness a violence like they knew again just to remember how I felt this week? Had our hearts really become so numb that we need dead bodies in order to feel the beat of compassion in our chest? Who am I if I need to be shocked back into my best self? I highly encourage you, our council members, to reconsider opening the library space for rentals so that our library can be a place of access for information and knowledge for all of our citizens, including having reasonable spaces. Thank you.
Anna Nguyen.
Good evening, good to see you again. Last time I was here, I spoke about why I need to be here and why representation matters, why everybody matters, not just white, straight.
Can I get your address?
I apologize, my name's Anna Nguyen. My address is seven six oh three. My address is 7603 Cattle Cove, Austin, Texas. Representation matters, not just white people, straight people, cisgender people, but black, brown, yellow, Vietnamese, Middle Eastern, transgender, non-binary, heterosexual, gay, bisexual, pansexual, all kinds. There are seven billion people on this earth. There cannot be just two gender and two sexual orientation. Today, I'm here to talk about literature and the banning of such. Throughout history, beginning with the Acts of the Apostle, Paul wrote about burning of books. In the 13th century, the Catholic Church waged the Albigensian Crusade against the Cathars of Lengado, and nearly every tax that could be found was destroyed. The Third Reich burned books written by Jews, pacifists, liberal anarchists, socialists, communists, by those who spoke out about gender and sexuality, and, yeah, also books written by religious people. They banned 137 different authors. More recently, the Taliban publicly burned and destroyed videotapes, television, music records, and photographs. They adopted censorship, banned or burned books. They threw tens of thousands of books into the Helmand River. The library that you have here is a precious resource. Don't do what the Christian Crusade did. Don't do what the Nazis did. Don't do what the Taliban's are doing. Our children deserves better. Thank you.
I'm Tegan Ritter. I live at 2105 Emerald Isle Drive, Leander, Texas. Mayor Troy Hill is the biggest threat to constitutionally protected free speech in Leander history. The city council has an ordinance against deleting posts on social media, but Troy does this daily. Worse, if he thinks you're generally against him, he will block you completely. This is against our city's ordinance regarding social media, which states pages where government businesses address is a public forum and our right to free speech is protected there. Additionally, in May of this year, the Fifth Circuit has joined the growing body of federal courts, finding that government officials cannot delete comments or block people that they disagree with on social media. It should be of no shock that Troy is financially irresponsible. Just look at the $400,000 being spent on litigation, including where Troy stiffed the severance with the city manager. In a similar fashion, Troy forgot to pay his bill on his website, leanderadvocacygroup.com. When leanderadvocacygroup.com went into foreclosure, I bought it. If you visit leanderadvocacygroup.com now, you will be redirected to the ACLU report page where you can file a complaint about Troy's social media practices. That's leanderadvocacygroup.com, where you can report your social media comments are being deleted and include if you're blocked altogether. That's leanderadvocacygroup.com, Troy's former website, now owned by me and used to file social media complaints with the ACLU. I'll be speaking later about the ordinance regarding canceling citizens' comments. But what I do have to say is there are a ton of people in this room that want their voice to be heard about a variety of issues. If an issue comes up later where someone believes that they have something that they could say that might change the minds and hearts of you guys up here, I believe that you guys have a responsibility to hear it. The last city council and mayor that were here, as soon as public comments was ending, he asked if there was anybody else that wanted to speak on every item because it was important to him that every constituent had their voice heard by the people that we elected. And I have seen the hearts and minds of people on this dais change based on what people have to say into this microphone. And so if you really want to open your hearts and minds and deliberate fairly, then it is your obligation to listen to every person that has something that they want to say to you. That's it for now. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and community citizens. My name is Lauren McAndrews. I'm representing Opportunities for WBC located at 604 High Tech Drive in Georgetown, Texas, is our main office. I apologize for the voice. I'm just coming over this lovely stuff that's been going around. But I have two very important things to say today. And the first is thank you. Thank you to the citizens of this community, to the council, to the leaders, but to the everyday citizens who support our programs. Opportunities for WBC is the official community action agency for Williamson and Burnet Counties. We have the Meals on Wheels program. We do the Head Start program. We have community services and affordable housing. These programs help our neighbors in need. And the one thing that I pride myself on is although we have differences of opinion sometimes in decisions that are made in our community and our leaders, we still try to take care of our neighbors. And our programs do this with the help and support of y'all. The city of Leander has generously supported us over the years, and there is an item on the consent agenda to help fund Meals on Wheels again, and I thank you for that. These are senior neighbors who are homebound, who can, without the support of this program, would be forced to sometimes move into a facility where they don't want to be. The other thing I want to share with you is there's lots of opportunities to get involved. We invite all of our elected officials and all citizens to come and see what our programs are about. We're very, very transparent. We invite you to ride along with us when we deliver to homebound meals, or come see our Head Start Center and see our children at play. Understand that although our community is thriving, Leander is thriving, and so is Williamson County, there is still poverty, there are still people in need, and there are still people who need our support. Our agency has two upcoming events we are still promoting. One is a style show. It's a ladies' fashion style show. It is two weeks from today. It is a brunch. We have the distinguished gentlemen of Williamson County, which includes some police chiefs, some fire, some local mayors, and I would still need some distinguished gentlemen if any of you are interested sitting up there. But we still have tickets that are on sale, and that fundraiser supports Meals on Wheels strictly for Williamson County. So I will be leaving some flyers out front if the public is interested as well. The other event we have coming up is in November. It is called Pull, Shoot, and Serve. It is a clay shoot where we raise money for all of our programs. But again, I really just want to thank you because the way I look at this community is that opportunities for WBC and our programs are patches. And the city of Leander is a patch, and there's many programs here. And those patches alone do some great things. However, when those patches are sewn together, we literally make a beautiful quilt, a quilt of diversity, but yet a quilt that can blanket our community with the services they need. So I thank each and every one of you, and I wish you good luck.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move to seven, and we do have a proclamation.
Yes, we do. Oh, sorry about that. Whereas, excuse me, the National Association of Town Watch and the Leander Police Department are sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on October 1st entitled National Night Out. And whereas this event provides a unique opportunity for the city of Leander to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Leander be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs that impact the safety and security of their community and that their active participation can help produce crime. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are the primary themes of National Night Out program. Now therefore, we, Mayor and City Council of Leander, Texas, do hereby call upon all citizens of Leander to join the Leander Police Department in supporting National Night Out 2019. And further, let it be that we, the city of Leander, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, as National Night Out. In testimony whereof, I, Troy Hill, Mayor, or Mayor Troy Hill, have hereunto a fixed signature this 19th day of September, 2019.
That was quite a proclamation.
It's quite a proclamation.
A lot of words. I just want to thank the mayor and city council here. This is our 18th year doing National Night Out. So far, we have 35 parties set up, and we're expecting more before the event in two weeks. It's going to be October 1st, 2019, and we're expecting about 3,000 people to show up at the various parties. So I would like to invite all of you to show up and participate. And to give you a little bit more of an idea about what National Night Out is, I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Wilcox.
Good evening. How's everyone doing? All right, National Night Out. What is it? Well, I have a little video that I want to show you in just a second that we just got released, and it tells you a little bit more about National Night Out. So National Night Out is most certainly our opportunity to get to know our neighbors. It is our opportunity to get to know our first responders. It is an opportunity for us to come together in good circumstances to prepare for things that could happen. So I turn it over, and let's watch the video.
Looks like your neighbors are moving.
It's pretty hot out here. Oh, I'd have had a bigger truck, unless they want to make multiple trips. Is that a Samsung 82-inch dual-triple HDR fragmented TV? Good man.
You know, I don't think I even caught their names.
You see that, honey? He's carrying that using the plextural method to lift that way. He must work out, lift with your back, not your knees.
Oh, I wonder what they do for a living.
With all that jewelry? I'll bet they went to Jared's. Maybe I should give him a hand.
Honey.
Okay, let me get the door for you.
Don't be the person that waves to burglars who just cleaned out your neighbor's house. Getting to know your neighbors is one great way to prevent crime. Right in that? Join us on October 1st for National Night Out. And if you can't participate on National Night Out, be sure to turn on your porch light and register for a chance to win some great prizes.
So I got to tell you, it was a lot of fun to film that. But really and truly, I just want everyone to understand how important this night is, but in a fun way. So we're very, very pleased to get to do that. So if it's okay, we'd love to take a picture with the whole city council and our police department that's here.
Can we get one with the movie star down there?
Absolutely, please.
Is that being sent to the academy because? Don't put our name on it.
They'll be writing autographs after.
There you go. You're famous.
Hey.
Ah, you look good, baby.
You're a little hidden there.
Probably good.
Sorry, Gary, can you get on this side of one?
Yes.
All of them?
There you go.
Oh, yeah, I got to give that.
Come on, guys.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
This time, we're going to move to item eight, staff reports. Mr. Gordon Pierce.
Yes, sir. We've got some new charts we tried to prepare to make sure that we're showing you more than we did in the past. The front chart, which you didn't see, shows it's 2.38 of our sales tax goes to us. $2.39 goes to Cap Metro, 27.43 cents goes to the state of Texas. To date, we have increased our sales tax by just over, you flipped on me, the one I just talked about. But our sales tax has increased this year to just over 4.328 million. This month, we're up just a little, $373,000. Sales tax continues to grow, and it is a viable part of our income here in the city of Leander. That's a chart that shows you other areas and how their growth has been. We think this report, because the state does do catch-ups sometimes, we show only minus 0.305, but you can see to date we're still up 15.35% over last year.
That's great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you doing that. And that's good to hear. We've got a lot going on. I hear every day about how, you know, I hear developers and realtors talking about how much activity there is. It's pretty incredible, actually. All right, so Mr. Fletcher.
Back again.
Feel like we were just here.
I'm going to turn this over. This is our quarterly report. This is for September 19th, 2019. And we're going to hold for a second.
While she's getting those, we've included all these in your packet now. Some members of council indicated they'd like to have those, so should they're all together.
Okay, I'd like to turn it over to Lieutenant Wilcox.
Hello again.
Hi.
Okay, so right here, what I have is just a little summary of the neighbors' report. So this is just through the end of August. Nothing that's really standing out with that. I did want to take an opportunity to show you the collision information. Again, this is, that's been investigated. The number of calls for service is larger because we don't always do a report with every single crash. So in other words, if it's below $1,000, smaller, reported afterwards, we wouldn't do those. So why am I telling you about this? Well, clear crashes happen all over the city. And as our city grows and as we get more throughput, we're going to continue to have more crashes. So certain times of year, we do have higher risk levels for those crashes. So here's what we did. We had an initiative for Labor Day for a no-refusal DWI weekend, and I would like to highlight a couple of items that we did. So there were three DWI arrests and four others. There were 93 speeding violations, 42 of which were citations, 51 warnings, 155 other traffic violations, 32 of which were citations, and there were 10 collisions during this time period, four of which were injury collisions. So that's just, so you kind of understand when we do know about certain times of year where there are more DWIs and things like that. These are some of the initiatives that we do for that, just a small window. I also wanted to share with you a couple of pieces of information, but just about some of the other things that we do. So we've had several different women's self-defense class evenings. We had one, I believe it was last Monday, very heavily attended by our citizens, and they're very happy about it. First day of school, we had officers go out and greet the First day of school, we had officers go out and greet the students as they came in. So we've got the chief up in the upper right corner. It was very, very fun and very, very popular with the kids. We had the Williamson County Children's Advocacy Center host a class at the police department, and this was about recognizing and reporting child abuse. Very hard topic, but a very good class, very, very good class. We also assisted with some Special Olympics fundraisers at the Dunkin' Donuts that was in Cedar Park. We have coming up more Special Olympics events. We have T-shirts that we're helping them sell. They are at the police department at the front desk. They're $20, and all those funds go to the Special Olympics. We have National Night Out coming up on October 1st, but we also have the kickoff event, I think she has already left, that's on the 28th. And that will be in front of the PD, and it is for the organizers to come pick up their stuff. If any of y'all would like to come, just let me know. We're going to be doing photographs, little fun things with the kids. We're going to have the K-9 unit out there to do that as well. Drug Takeback is coming up on October 26. It is from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's in the front parking lot of the police department. So all people need to do is if you've got old medications, you just bring them, drop them off. This is done in conjunction with the DEA, and they take it, take it all and properly dispose of it. That same day, at about the same time, there's going to be the Leander Pets Butacular, and I believe it's going to be in the Coles parking lot, or real close by. And we will be able to do free microchips for our citizens. We're also working to see if we can get some in some grant money so that we can provide it for free as well to anyone from Williamson County. Trunk or Treat, I'm sorry, was, okay. October 31st is Trunk or Treat at Camacho Elementary, and hopefully, it doesn't decide that's when it's going to rain. But otherwise, there'll be lots of fun events there. And we don't have any specifics, but hopefully, on the website, we will get some Blue Santa information. Will be coming up very soon. Any questions? Okay. All right, you guys rock. Thank you so much.
You guys do a great job. All right, Ms. Ellison with our Public Works Report.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. So this is the water report for August. I know we've seen a lot of these charts before, but this is the graph that's put out by L.C.R.A. that shows the combined storage of Lakes Buchanan and Travis. So looking back, I guess, so, make sure I do this right. There we go. This is current, or as of the end of August. And then it looks back one year, a year ago, 2018, September 1st. We were at about 1.37 million acre feet, or about 68% full. And then, of course, everybody remembers the historic rains in October of 18, and then we stabilized, or the lake stabilized basically at full for about eight months until we had those rains in May, early this year. And then about mid-July, you see us kind of taper off and, and go below full. So past to the right of the yellow line, we have different projections based on the weather patterns. Of course, if the weather is wet, they predict us to be pretty close to full. And then if it goes extreme dry, we look to be at about 1.6 million acre feet or still about 80% full. And then this next figure is the daily water use for Leander. The blue is the current month, August 2019, and the red, solid red line is, excuse me, is August 2018. So we had a peak day, August 11th, of 15.29 million gallons. This was our peak for the entire year so far as well. Compared to last August, it was about, I guess we were at 12.74 million gallons, I'm sorry, 12.75 million gallons. And then this dashed line is last month. So we were up, let's see, about 2 million gallons from July last year, our water consumption. And then compared to August last year, total water use, I'm sorry, August 2019 compared to 2018, we're using about 71 more million gallon. These are our water connections. We had approximately, not approximately, we had 19,287 total connections currently. This is up about 162 new connections for the month of August. These are our two, this is July and August. And 144 of those are residential. We saw a slight increase in commercial as well down here. And then comparing to August of last year, we have about 1,750 new connections based from last year to this year. And the final report, I apologize, the numbers are really small. I tried to truncate this table. It's getting a little, a little long. But these show the water production of our two plants, BCRUA and Sandy Creek. BCRUA is the light blue here on the bottom, and Sandy Creek is this dark blue, and then the orange is combined. So the, the solid line is the 12-month rolling average, and then the dashed line is the monthly variation. So you can see we're trending towards, we may not be done. Typically, we peak in August, but we could still see a peak coming in September. So I'd like to note that our Sandy Creek plant pumped the most water it's ever pumped in its whole life. So, yeah, it's good times. And that's, that's all I have. Is there any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah?
It was your department that dealt with the broken line out by Leander High School, right?
That's correct.
You all did a phenomenal job getting that wrapped up quickly.
Thank you. I, I gave my guys kudos too because they, it was hot that day, and they, they really, they worked hard, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Though my son was quite upset that you fixed it.
You know, I said he made a lot of kids unhappy by getting that water back online.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. All right, at this time, we're going to convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.074, Texas Government Code, to deliberate the appointment and employment of a city manager. The time is 7:34, and we are in an executive session. Hello again. The time is 7:54. We're going to reconvene into open session and take any action as deemed appropriate in the city council's discretion regarding the appointment and employment of a city manager. Pro temp?
I will take no action.
All right, we will move to item, we're going to go to our consent agenda. This is an action item.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor. All right, passes unanimously. All right, at this time, we're going to move to our public hearing, item 19. We're going to conduct a public hearing to consider proposed budget for fiscal year 2020.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. As Mr. New gets that loaded, I'll go through the slides that were presented back in August when the city manager, or we presented the city manager's proposed budget. And we have all of staff here to answer any questions that you may have at this time. The fiscal year 2020 tax base is an increase of 15.8% over the previous year. We are now up to $6.3 billion in property tax value. That's an increase of 865 million from last year, and half of that, or more than half of that, is related to new, new growth. The tax rate that is proposed in this budget and will be on the agenda later this evening is a decrease of 1 cent from the current rate. So the proposed rate is 54 cents, .1867. And that's the seventh year in a row that you've been able to lower the, the tax rate. Some of the general fund primary revenue sources obviously include property tax revenues. The slide on the left includes both the general fund side of the property tax. That's the, the blue colored bars under, on the bottom of those columns. And then the debt service, which also is a significant part of your property tax bill. On the right-hand side are the sales tax revenues through, this has not been updated for September. This was as of August, so this compares year-to-date through August for the previous six or seven years. Year-to-date, we're up 15% over last year. We typically do not budget that aggressive an increase in the following year, so the budget for next year in sales tax is based on a 5% increase over what we expect to receive this year. So we try to stay extremely conservative on, on that side, on sales tax revenue. Another major source of revenues for the general fund are development fees. Those are building permits, zoning, site plans, those sort of fees that related to new construction, new development. That can be cyclical. It can also be, come in waves. So you can see in this chart that the, there's a little bit of up and down, but it's primarily been up since 2013. Although, we want to be conservative, so we are not banking, so to speak, on, on the same amount of revenue next year as this year. But we don't have any indications yet that that is the trend. We just want to be conservative so that we don't fall, fall short. So in summary, the general fund revenues are almost $42 million. That's a 6.8% increase over last year. And you can see how the major revenue sources divvy up that pie with nearly 45% property tax, 15% sales tax, and the rest in, in other, other fees. On the expenditure side, the budget is balanced. We are using, proposing in the budget to use $1.5 million in surplus from the current year that we're about to end on September 30th. We're proposing to take that $1.5 million surplus and put it into our capital improvement projects fund to fund some of the smaller capital improvement projects. The general fund budget includes 20 new positions. Those positions are listed to the, to the side. The budget maintains the street rehab program at $1.75 million. And the proposed budget includes funding to update our pavement condition management model, which is a five-year, it's an inventory of all our streets, existing streets, pavement condition. And then it puts together a scoring system and in terms of quality of, of road and, and condition of the pavement. And then it's used by the Public Works Department to put together a, a five-year pavement rehab program. So that'll be in the FY '20 budget. Some of the capital projects that would, or that would be funded with the one and a half million dollars that I spoke about are, are listed to the right. Moving on to the golf course. The golf course is an enterprise fund, which means it has to be self-supporting. The income it brings in through fees has to cover its, its expenses. You may recall last year that the, the fund ended in a slight surplus. So we still have hope that if September is strong, that that will happen this year. But as they say, stay tuned. It's very close. I miss, I incorrectly spoke last time I made this presentation. The estimated rounds of 29,100 are not all 18-hole rounds. Some of those are nine-hole rounds. But learned something every new, every. On the utility side, Water and Sewer Fund, our revenues on the water side of the bill are projected to increase 7% over the current year. Water revenues are not difficult to predict, but you need to be careful, careful not to get too aggressive because a lot of things can happen with mother nature and the weather. This slide has not been updated to include the, the October, the August usage that was just reported this evening. So we're in a little better shape than where we were even a month ago. But we, we try to stay very conservative on projecting increases, even though our customer count keeps going, going up. In the utility fund, we have four new positions. We also have $1.8 million to replace older non-automated meters. These meters are over 10 years old. They should be replaced anyway. But this would replace about almost 8,000 meters in that, and, and they would be replaced with the newer technology where they're radio frequency red and, and more accurate, so. On the utility fund impact fees, those are paid by the development community when they, when they build and tie into our system. Again, the decreases on the, the far right shouldn't be alarming. We try to stay extremely conservative because it is all driven by demand and timing of that demand. So we might see a spike at the beginning of one year or at the end of another, and, and so we try not to bank on what we don't have yet because these revenues fund capital improvement projects. And once you let those contracts, you need to have the money to finish them, so. But both of those funds are, are, are very healthy, and they also have a lot of projects tied to them. Which here are, this is more for show in terms of, I know it's hard to read, but there are a lot of different capital improvement projects. This is not all of them, but it is some of the more significant ones that were funded by bonds, debt issuance on the left-hand side, and on the right-hand side, utility projects. And those are funded by utility revenues or those impact fees that I spoke about. So these are all projects that are either currently underway, and, and funding for next year is just to finish them, or they're new projects but funded in the proposed budget. In, in summary, that's essentially just three funds of, we, the entire city budget that's before you is, probably has over 20 funds. There's a lot of minor funds that we don't go into at this proposed, or this presentation stage. So all told, the proposed FY 2020 budget is approximately $168 million. 25% of that is the general fund. So what I went over this evening is the, the three major funds, utility, general fund, and the golf course. Happy to answer any questions. If they're difficult, we have the staff here to answer them.
I think it would be useful if we could.
It is a public hearing, I'm sorry. Maybe, public hearing.
All right. So at this time, we're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to move to discuss approving the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020. Any discussion? This is an action item?
A motion to approve the budget.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor? All right, passes unanimously.
Excuse me, mayor. I was trying to, can we set the meeting for the unfunded CIP? Can we set that tonight, right now?
It's already set.
Oh, is it already set? Okay. Perfect. I'll be there. Okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay. We're going to move to item twenty. Councilor Sederquist has something to read.
I am recusing myself from this item, because without my prior knowledge, a family member of mine spoke on this at planning and zoning.
All right. Item twenty, we're going to conduct a public hearing regarding special use case nineteen-dash-SU-dash-zero-zero-four to consider action on a special use permit to allow for outdoor music and activities until midnight on Friday and Saturday evenings, and to allow for a double-sided four-foot-by-eight-foot lighted marquee sign on two parcels of land approximately zero-point-two-eight-nine acres in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcels R-036-039, commonly known as two-oh-three West Broad Street, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Hello?
This is a public hearing for an update to the Smooth Village special use permit. The original permit was approved by the council April nineteenth, twenty-eighteen, to allow for the current use. The applicant has requested an update to the permit to allow for outdoor music and activities until midnight on Friday and Saturday evenings. And they've also requested an alternative sign. This sign is a lighted sign, and they have a couple of images. This was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission last week. They considered a recommendation to approve the request with the staff recommendation regarding the lighting of the sign, and they denied that motion. They did unanimously recommend approval of the special use permit for only the signage. I'll be available for questions after the public hearing, and the applicant would like to make a presentation.
Hi, everybody. How's it going?
Hello.
And we meet again. So, as you know, we are requesting the sign ordinance and the special, the four-by-eight sign for the lighted marquee sign. That was not the actual sign. That is just an idea of what we're doing, so to give you guys kind of a visual on the sign. It had the lights like we were talking about and everything. So, this is for midnight hours for Friday and Saturday only, as well as the sign. So, as I mentioned, this is not the actual sign. It's going to be a metal frame, and it'll look very aesthetically pleasing. It'll have slow cycling colors, the same as my airstream down the street, how it kind of changes slowly. It's not going to be obnoxious or crazy, and it will follow with all of our ordinances. So, this is actually a picture of where it will be located on the property. So, it'll be just at the end of the sidewalk on the interior of the property. The noise ordinance is the other thing we're talking about here, and the usage of our noise until midnight. So, a unit used to measure the intensity of sound or the power level of electrical signal by comparing it with a given level of, I always mess up on this, logarithmic scale. The decimal scale of the logarithmic is not linear. So, in other words, the decibels, it's not heard, just like your, your ears do not hear it as it perceives on the actual decimal reader. So, it is actually twice as loud, not ten times as loud, to our ears versus the reader. This is a picture of the OSHA regulations. For eighty-five decibels is where the limit of exposure is eight hours per day for OSHA regulations. And if you can't see that, just let me know, and I can tell you what it says. So, sound decreases six decibels every time the distance is doubled. Sound from a loudspeaker can be very directional. They're designed to create sound in a single direction within a cone or an arc. Sound can fluctuate in a song from loud to soft, or soft to loud. And these three pictures describe exactly how sound can project. So, if you're standing directly in front of the speakers, it's going to be a hundred percent. You've got exactly all of the sound coming straight at you. If you're to the side fifty degrees, it's going to completely change, and you'll have a great decrease in the way the sound is projected. Distance, this shows the distance of the sound and how it's measured as well. So, this is our pre-recorded music that we play during downtimes, so farmer's market and in-between bands or karaoke. And these are our actual decibel reader that we have, it's a, you know, outside source, so it's not on our phones or an app or anything like that. It's actually an official reader. So, we're measuring at fifteen feet, and I want you to pay attention to the fifteen feet mark, because this is, our ordinance says twenty-five feet, and we're measuring at fifteen. So, from the dance floor, that's approximately fifteen feet we've measured out, and the bar is seventy-one decibels at that area. And then behind the salon, meaning on the roadside of the salon, so technically looking at it would be in front of the salon, right? That is sixty-three. And then at the street is fifty-five, and across the street at our nearest neighbor is going to be fifty-two. So, then this is going to be for karaoke. This is just your average karaoke song. So, we've got eighty-six decibels, fifteen feet from the speakers. We've got sixty-seven decibels at the bar, sixty-eight behind the salon, which is roadside in front of, fifty-seven across the street. And this is actually with our loudest karaoke song, which is Chad singing Ace of Spades. It's a very loud song, and if you've ever heard him sing it, it's full blast. So, eighty-eight is fifteen feet from the speakers. Again, twenty-five is code, but we're taking extra measure and just going with the fifteen. Seventy-five at the bar, seventy-three at the salon, sixty-eight at the street, and fifty-eight across the street. So, you can see how it dramatically decreases. And this is actually for our live music. We had a show this past weekend on Saturday, and it was probably one of our by-far-best shows that we've ever had at Smooth Village. It was phenomenal. The city came out. Everybody just loved it, and we had rave reviews on how well of a show, you know, it was very put on. We actually didn't have our own sound equipment onstage this night. This was professional sound equipment led by the sound crew. It was filmed live. You can all see it in ten days. It's awesome. Anyway, so eighty-six decibels on the dance floor, and that, again, fifteen feet from the stage. Eighty, sorry, seventy-five behind the salon, and sixty-eight across the street. So, even though this was one of our loudest shows, we still met our decibels. All right. So, this is our noise ordinance, and it's Leander compared to Austin. And even though we hate to compare ourselves to Austin or anywhere else, but I thought it was appropriate to add this in here, because Austin says, theirs is just structured a little bit differently compared to ours. So, I just wanted to add in here that the decibels are twenty-five feet, like I'd stated before, and that also they go from two AM, or ten AM to two AM. And it's measured from the property line of business. It's not measured from the stage, and we are measured from the stage here in Leander. So, I just wanted to point that out for everybody. And also that the audible equipment can, it's seventy-five for the residence. So, it says here, "A person may not use sound equipment audible beyond the property line of the residence in the residential area that produces sound and exceeds seventy-five And then these are the noises and amplified sound. So, these are just restrictions and showing the differences in the decibel levels. And again, on here, it actually states that in Austin, they say that if your neighbors sign off on a form or a paper saying that they're okay with it, then Austin actually does allow it. So, like Rainey Street, for instance, their neighbors are on board, and they have allowed it, and so they're able to operate even in their residential area. So, traffic and noise, that was brought up in the P and Z, and we just wanted to point these out, so that way these can be clarified in advance. Cars may only park on the property around three hundred is what we park, or in a designated parking spot along West Broad Street. Those are parking spots that the city has put in, which, thanks for that. The city has used Smooth Village for events and overflow parking in the past without issue, and we hope to continue and offer these in the future. We love to help you guys out and, you know, alleviate some of that stress, especially on the neighbors and people parking on their properties. Bands and music will have the option to play until midnight. Expectations in that show will end before then, and allow us to clean up, and us to, you know, prepare to go home and see our kids and things like that. I mean, we are not planning on blasting everything until midnight. If there are hardly anyone there, then we will be closing at a reasonable time. So, that's kind of our, our hopes, is that we get it extended so that we have that option. Police and noise complaints, we've only had three in the past year, and those three have been within the last forty-five days. So, just to, you know, point that out, that way, it's, we've been doing this for a long time, and it's only until, you know, all of this came about that we've had noise complaints. So, the one noise complaint was at six-thirty PM. That's daytime. And the other one was, the other two, I'm sorry, were before ten PM. And as of right now, we're allowed to, you know, our permit says that we're stated, we're allowed to play until ten PM. So, we've had all these complaints up before that. Also, they've all been dismissed from Leander Police Department because we were operating within our permit. And they also don't know that we even have a permit, so, you know? I, I need a copy of that, if you guys have it, because the police department didn't, they were not aware any of those times, and they've asked us every time, "Do you have a permit, and can I see it?" And my answer is, "I have a permit, and I'm sorry you can't see it, because I don't have it." So, if we have a copy, I would love one. Owners promote volumes that allow conversation. Nobody likes to yell at their friends and family. And Chad and I, for one, have been in the music industry for a long time. He's been a musician forever. And the thing that we despise about going out is, you know, to live music, is that you can't hear. You have to scream at each other, or wear earplugs. And the thing that we really enjoy about our place is that you can have a normal conversation with anybody. And as a matter of fact, when the officers have come up, we have talked to them freely, and it's not a problem. So, that's, says something about the noise ordinance, you know, that we're trying to keep it to that point where we can still have a conversation. Even if you are sitting at a picnic table not too far from the stage, you can still hear each other. All surrounding properties have signed off an amendment of the special use permit, except for one property. And I believe you guys have all the signatures in front of you, so that way you can see. And there's not a note on this, but I wanted to point out, too, that one of my neighbors, she has the airstreams next door to me. She actually has an Airbnb. And she just got a five-star review last week on her Airbnb stating that, and this was from her customer, who she does not know, it was through Airbnb, stating that they went to karaoke and had so much fun, they left early before it was all over, and she wanted to compliment them that even though all of the music and all of the people were still there, they could not hear one single thing within their unit, in their airstream, because the AC was just so much great white noise. So, I just want to point out, they are literally maybe sixty, seventy-five feet away from us, and they are within the speaker range. So, they're just probably, I don't know, at a fifty-degree angle or so. I'm not really good at that whole math, but they're not too far away, and, I mean, they're just right on the other side of the tree line, and there's not anything blocking them. And I thought that was pretty cool, because they did write a really great review for her, and that was something to be said, that, you know, even though they're in the direct path, they still were good with it. Also, we have a neighbor on the right side of us, if you're looking from the stage, and he's said the same thing, that he's got a fan in his room, and he is just fine. So, just wanted to point all that out. And currently, we are ending at ten PM, and the majority of the people that are there, if the band shuts down at ten PM, they leave at ten fifteen. My bar tabs typically close out between ten fifteen and ten thirty. I have maybe five to seven people that are left behind, and they're regulars, our friends, people that help us shut down, things like that. So, it's a huge hit on our bar and our revenue. And with our bar and revenue also comes taxes, because I pay a lot of taxes. I mean, if you have anything with TABC, you pay a ton in taxes. So, anyway, I just wanted to point that out, too, that, you know, sales tax is a big deal. In two hours, with this Willie Nelson show that we did, it was a tribute show, and we had over two-hundred people there, and had our bar been open for another two hours, we probably could have made another five to eight-hundred dollars in beer sales, because that was a very big night for us. So, that's, it's a, kind of a big deal. In recent citizen survey, outdoor venues and music were highly sought after and attractive activities for Leander. And I believe that was brought up in a few city council, or council meetings ago, that, you know, there was a poll done, and people were looking for outdoor places. And I think there was, actually, there was just a thing put out in the community impact that I was given today, and I was really excited to see that our name was the only outdoor musics, music location in Leander and Cedar Park. And so, I think that's pretty cool, and that's something to be said for Leander, because we need that. And not only we the only outdoor, but your family can come, you know, your dogs can come. We always say, you know, we're family and pet-friendly, as long as your family and your pets are friendly. So, we want everybody to come and enjoy it, and I think that's a huge deal for us. It's very attractive for people not only from Leander, but all around. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. If you guys need anything, I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Public hearing is still open. We do have some people signed up. Again, if you give your name and address, you'll have three minutes. Bart Edwards. He did not want to speak. He wanted to lodge his vote for passage. Marco Sederquist, again denies speaking, but wants to lodge his opinion as for this. Joel Snyder, famous movie star.
My agent did say I'm allowed to speak, so. Thank you, council, mayor. I think that what we're getting with Smooth Village is turning the Old Town into a place, helping the Old Town become a venue that we can go to. I think one of the things when the Citizens Advisory Committee talked about is, we need things that bring people and activities to make citizens happy. And I think that is what Old Town is about, and that Smooth Village is part of that. So, I think the revenue, great. The sign, you know, you need something, because people really don't know what Old Town is. So, I think that's an important thing, and I'd like to say, I'm for this. I do want to see, is it okay if I talk about what was said before? Not okay?
I do need your address, though, Joe.
I need it?
You didn't give your address.
Oh, darn. It's eight oh-five Tabernash. I'm Joel Snyder, Leander. Thank you.
Peggy Roberts?
Excuse me, I've been up since two forty-eight this morning, so I'm a little tired. My name is Peggy Roberts. I live at three oh-two West Road. I came out because I am against this, because I do live catty-corner to this. And contrary to what they've all said, it is loud. I invite you over, so that you can come listen to it. The music doesn't end at ten o'clock for karaoke. As a matter of fact, they advertise on their Facebook that it goes till eleven. As a matter of fact, they advertise on their Facebook that it goes till 11:00, sometimes it goes till 12:00. These are screenshots. Here it is in the paper, that it goes till 12:00. I'm against it because it is noisy. The venue is outdoors, and the venue is not in an enclosed structure to house the music, the people, or the alcohol. There's no sound barrier, the trailer's not a sound barrier. It's also unclear as to what activities are being permitted under this permit, because it has not been clarified. My bedroom face is broad, I'm deaf in one ear, I can hear the noise when I try to go to sleep. I have to get up at 4:00 AM on a Saturday morning, so it is difficult. You hear the music till 10:00, maybe they'd stop the karaoke, but they put the music on speakers, it's loud, you can hear people continuing on. There's still a lot of people that stay after 10:00. They don't mosey on, they stay there. So I've been up to La Tapatia, which we all know where La Tapatia in HEB is. If you sit outside, you can hear the music over there, because we're talking about the sound. Well, that's a pretty good distance away, and I'm just right over here, so it is loud. And I'd like to say about some of the people that did sign that, they understood at the first permit hearing that it wasn't discussed about being a live venue, that we got notices that said it was going to be trailers that housed the hair salon and food, you know, not the live music. You know, it's already going till 10:00, but if they stop at 10:00, but sometimes they don't stop at 10:00. I lived in this area almost all my life. This is still residential. I ask that you respect us too. I mean, if we didn't, if there's at least 10, 15 people that live around in this area, even Saturday night, I was up here at my cousin's house in the Old Town little neighborhood, and we could hear the music then. So, you know, the sound does travel. I want to say the bakery behind me is not crowded, the beer market one block behind me, it's not crowded, you know? There's another business around me, they don't make the noise. I live there, and I work, and I'm entitled to have some quiet too. They do get it till 10:00, I just disagree that they extend it. I'm also worried about the safety, because there is no fence, there is no one-way in, no one-way out. Alcohol does get carried out, we've all witnessed it.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you'd like to see these.
Annette Sponsler.
Hi, I won't take three minutes. I just want to say I'm for the special use permit till midnight. I've been going to Smooth Village for probably about six months now. It's a great place for kids, family. My daughter goes and sings karaoke for like three hours, and they let her do it. So it's great. We were there on 4th of July, the food truck wasn't doing really well, they weren't keeping up with the orders, and Angel and Chad bought pizzas, like 50 Domino's pizzas, and were giving them out for like donations, or if you didn't want to donate, they would just give you the pizza. Like, they're a great asset to our city. I've been there, I've seen the decibel meter, it's not very loud, we've walked across the street. I think this is a completely reasonable request. Thank you.
Can I get your address, Annette?
Oh, 402 Hernando Sluth.
Thank you. Fay Lohman.
Fay Lohman, 204 West Broad Street. I started talking to Chad and Angel in July. I talked to them individually about their music. It is loud. We live right across the street. We hear the music through our window, we have to turn our TV off. I call, on July 13, I text her at 11:55 at night, the music's supposed to be over at 10:00. And July 20, I phone the police, I phoned twice, another person phoned. We are complaining. We live there, right across the street. Peggy lives down the street, she works two jobs. My husband works a 50-hour week. It's every Saturday night, we can hear the music. And if she says that she wants the people to hear the music over at HEB, just think how it sounds to us at our house, where we can't even enjoy TV at nighttime. It's dangerous, the street is dangerous. We can't park our car. People pass us on the left side while we're trying to park our car. We saw a little girl run across the street on the last fast, and almost got struck by a car, because people are going too fast down that road. It's dangerous, and it is very loud. And I understand that she's got her decimal reader, and that's all fine, but we live there, and they're enjoying it at our expense and our comfort. My husband's been there, that was his grandmother's house, and we like to live the rest of our life there, but we want to enjoy our peace and quiet too. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Crystal Cloud.
Hi, Crystal Cloud, 1513 Yudlin Drive in Leander. I want to say good evening to you and thank you all for serving our great city. I'm asking you to approve the sign and extended hours for Smooth Village on Friday and Saturday nights. They are a small business, they believe in our city of Leander, they also really strongly believe in building Old Town Leander, in wanting to build a place where our community can come together and enjoy some fun. There is really nothing like this here in Leander, it's very unique, it's a great place for families to come. My husband and I, we enjoy coming on a Friday or Saturday night, enjoy the farmer's market, we bring our dogs. It's a great place for families, I've seen them out there, and it's a great place for your teenagers. Because guess what? Your teenagers aren't out doing other things. You know where they are, they're at Smooth Village, they're having a fun time. And yes, they do sell now, they sell alcohol, they do have signs up, they are compliant with state regulations, and I've been out there, and I have never seen anybody walk away with alcohol or anything. It's a great venue, the sign out front would help to start promote more stuff that they have going on, the Friday night karaoke, the Saturday farmer's market, Saturday events that go on, different things that they do to promote our neighborhood. So I'm asking you to approve this and to support a local, small business. Old Town Leander needs them, our little city needs them, there is nobody like them. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Douglas Lohman, I live at 204 West Road, and I am against the additional hours that they're requesting. There are seven residences that you could see Smooth Village from their porches. So there are residents that live there, and they have rights too, just like everybody else. And also, the noise complaints, she says that there were none after 10:00, but one listed in the city police report said 10:49. So yeah, she's had complaints for playing after 10:00. The noise, like I said, she says it's going away from us, but there's times when, the last time my wife complained, was complaining to the police department about the noise, standing in the front door with it open, I couldn't hear the TV for the drums, they were so loud. I'm also concerned about safety, all that traffic. You say it's family-friendly, but personally, I don't think beer and children should be together. I mean, alcohol in moderation is fine, but if you could extend it another two hours, how many more people are going to be inebriated and drive away from there with their children? That's concerns. And again, she's already covered the 85 decibels, but that by OSHA code, if it's more than 85 for more than eight hours, you can get hearing damage. But like I said, I hope that y'all vote like the planning commission does, and they voted three of four against the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to move to discuss and consider action regarding the special use case 19-SU-004. Counsel.
I have a question for Angel.
That's next.
First of all, I want to commend you on all the work you did, the pre-work to do this, so thank you. The decibel that you, the reader that you used, was that, I know you mentioned, the code is for 25 feet, and you measured it 15. Did you also measure it 25?
So 15 is the dance floor area, and the bar is about 25. So we just kind of went in between both of those, because it's literally another 10 feet, and there's the bar. So whatever the bar reading was, is what the 25 was.
Okay, so you did read at 25?
Oh, yeah. We stand behind the bar with that decimal reader all the time, and that's where we make sure that it's to code. As a matter of fact, when the last time that the police officer was out was for the Willie Nelson concert, and we stood right there with him at 25 feet and read the code, or and read the thing.
Oh.
75 at the bar?
Oh, sorry, my bad, 75 at the bar. So the dance floor is 25? Okay, so the dance floor is 25.
Okay, so it's not a situation that it's getting louder as it goes away?
Correct, it's getting quieter as it goes away. So the dance floor is 25, correction.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel.
Yes, I had a...
Will nobody raise their hand?
No, no, we go down the line, right?
Well, look here.
No, 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 no.
All right, hold on.
Well, this is, these are one of those decisions that's difficult, because I really love what you're doing for the community and what your business is doing, but I also sympathize with the residents who live there, and with the noise that they have to deal with, especially the lady who has to get up early on a Saturday. I know how I would feel. I'd probably just buy some air, something to put in my ears, but I've got to think about this a little bit, so I'm going to let that move on to you.
My turn?
Yes, your turn.
All right, motion to approve special use case 19-SU-004 to allow for outdoor music and activities until midnight on Friday and Saturday evenings, to allow for a double-sided four-by-eight lighting marquee sign.
I have discussion. Okay, Robin, I'm sorry, Ms. Griffin, may I please ask you a question? So in looking at this area, I see, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, our Old Town Future Land Use map designates this whole area for, is it designated for residential and commercial in the Future Land Use?
So the Future Land Use map designates it as Old Town Mixed Use, so that allows for both residential and commercial.
Okay, and then when I looked at the addresses to the south of Broad Street, it appears as though they're all zoned general commercial, not, I mean, so someone actually had to file for general commercial on those, correct?
So I would have to research that. There was an instance in the 90s where they did a large area zoning case. I'm not confident if this was part of that or not, but we do have instances where you're zoned commercial, but there's a single-family home there.
Sure, but they currently carry the zoning of general commercial?
The properties on the south side of Broad are general commercial.
Okay, and do you need a permit for noise if you're staying within the designated hours and you're under the noise ordinance?
I'm not aware of a noise permit.
Okay. And it's, our ordinance says 85 decibels at 25 feet from the property line?
I'm not confident in that ordinance, but I think that's what she had shown.
Okay, thank you.
I had a couple of questions, Angel. So I know the owner at Hot Spot has kind of faced the same thing at Cedar Park, and they actually, I think, changed an ordinance because of that location. And it was, strangely enough, it was, again, the neighborhood, the Old Town Square towards Costco that was complaining, like across the street. So somehow the sound is, well, I take that back, their stage faces north to south, so that makes sense. Is there any way that you could do any type of partial fence that, you know, whether it's in back of the trailer on the sides, I don't know, I'm just asking the question.
Honestly, I don't think that fencing is going to do any good. Like Peggy was saying, that the trailer obviously doesn't help. So a trailer is way taller than the fencing would be. But I don't think that that's going to help, because it's the backside of our speakers, do you know what I mean? So we're already pointing them in and out, so they're completely away from everybody. And to answer yours, it's 125 decibels is when you need another permit, and that is for a rock concert and/or closing city streets. I've already looked into that. But yes, I don't think that a fence is going to do anything, honestly. So I mean, if you see the readings that we've taken, whenever you go on the other side of those Airstreams, because we have one Airstream parked this way, and then another one this way, so we essentially have a backer of some sort to kind of bounce some of that sound off. And then we have food trucks on the other side. I mean, I don't know that a fence is going to necessarily do any better.
What about, they were telling me, the owner there was telling me, somehow they point the speakers a certain way, so bouncing, I don't know.
So we turn our speakers to where they're not straight ahead, they're in towards each other, and the one in the middle is straightforward, so all of our noise goes like a cone, so it goes straight out instead of going this way. So we do make efforts to make sure that our directional sound is not going out, sorry, out for the world, it's going in and that way.
Okay. If this passed, could you kind of assure us that it'd be a hard stop at midnight?
Oh, yeah, for sure. And that's the thing, is we're not intending on going to midnight, we want to have that option. So that way, if we do have people that, you know, like, okay, for instance, last Friday, we had a group, a pretty sizable group of people that came in at, it was 9:45 or something around that, and we had, we already had our list going of songs, and we had to stop at 10:00. And, you know, whenever the last song goes on, it might be 5:00 after 10:00 or something like that. But anyway, we stopped it, and they asked us, they're like, "Hey, are we really done? Like, seriously, we can't play anymore?" Our bar is open until midnight. That is what is stated in the paper and everywhere else, our bar is open till midnight. And they were like, "So your bar's open? And we just have to sit here and stare at each other? We're not really doing karaoke anymore?" I was like, "No, I'm sorry." They left, and they went to Cedar Park, to Shooters or Top Spin or whatever that place is called that does karaoke in Cedar Park. And I was like, "Oh, man, I'm so sorry, you guys." So, you know, people are eagerly waiting to see if it does pass, because they want to hang out, they want to come at 10:50 and sing a few songs, you know, and have a couple beers or whatever. But yeah, so I mean, we don't intend on going to midnight with our sound, we want to have that as our buffer. So if we do go to midnight, or go to 11:30 or 11:40, we still have time to shut down, because my bar closes at 12:00, and it's done, like, I'm done. All tabs are closed, I walk around, close them out, we're done. So I want to go home. I don't want to stay up until forever listening to people screaming in the microphone, although it's fun, but I don't want to hear it all night. So, yeah. I mean, I think that 12:00 is more than reasonable, and I would never go further than that anyway, so.
Thank you. We do have a motion on the floor to approve?
I'd like to, actually, I would second that motion if we would put it back till 11:00. Split the difference. Nope, okay, hold on, I won't second it.
I'll second it. All right, we have a motion and a second for approval, all in favor? All opposed? All right, motion passes five to one. Thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to move to item twenty-one, we're going to conduct a public hearing regarding zoning case nineteen dash Z dash zero zero six to amend the current zoning of SFUMH dash two dash B, Single Family Urban Manufactured Home, to PUD, Planned Unit Development, with the base zoning district of SFT dash two dash A, Single Family Townhome, on one parcel of land approximately two-point-three-eight acres in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcel R zero three six five seven nine, commonly known as twelve oh one Horizon Park Boulevard, Leander, Williamson County, Texas.
This is a, a public hearing for the Horizon Park Townhouse's Planned Unit Development. The purpose of the PUD is to allow for the development of attached or detached, uh, single-family homes. They are requesting a PUD so they can have a condo regime project. This will allow multiple units on one lot. We do have a Cottage Housing District that would allow multiple units on one lot, but it does not allow for attached product, so that's part of the reason why they're requesting the Planned Unit Development. Their initial proposal included twelve units per acre that would allow for a maximum of twenty-eight units. During the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the applicant reduced the proposed density to eight units per acre and that would allow for a maximum of nineteen units, and that's what's shown in their exhibit. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the request with the modification to the density, and I'll be available for questions after the public hearing.
All right, the public hea- hearing is still open. I do have some people signed up. Again, when I call your name, come forward, give me your address, and you have three minutes. First is Rob Aldridge, uh, he is declining to speak, I take that back, and he wants to lodge his vote against the item, uh, as does Michael Allen, one oh one nine Overlook Bend, Leander, Texas, wants to lodge his against. Don White, um, wants to lodge his against. Gail White also wants to lodge a, a vote against. Sherry Darden wants to vote against. Clifford Hall, um, would like to speak, so if you'd come up and give your name and address.
Clifford Hall, six oh four Scenic Path, Overlook Estates. Thank you, Mayor Hill, Councilwoman and Councilman, for allowing me the opportunity to speak again on this, these matters of zoning. I guess I did hear that someone suggested that Overlook Estates is at ground zero for lots of apartments, townhomes, commercial. There's a lot of property that's lightly occupied, one home for three acres, you know, fortunately for them, they have a wonderful gap there that allows them a lot of room about their houses. So we obviously have to come with some kind of solution here, hopefully unanimously somehow, because otherwise, I think we're going to be here a lot and we're going to have a lot of emails, we're going to have a lot of hours we're going to spend on this matter of Horizon Park. Now, how do we get there, right? We recently made a, a council decision to allow one homeowner to keep his, uh, his home in his lot. We, we set a boundary of the front acre, got two homes, but the back two acres of that lot on Horizon Park got one single-family home, so we sort of set a three homes, uh, for a three-acre area in that area, right? So we kind of made that as, that was okay. Now we are faced with a, a much higher density of twenty homes. We also have Starlight Village, uh, and they are a nice subdivision and probably averaging around eight thousand square feet per lot, I guess, probably around three to four homes per acre, a- and this seems a nice opportunity here. I would imagine a, a development that would be successful would probably want some barrier to the commercial area in the back, maybe open or parkland or leave it as trees, and allowing some density of, of four to eight homes in a PUD development of nice quality, you know, giving them a gap to commercial and transitioning into the neighborhood area as single-family. So, you know, my, my recommend, my request is that we deny this request for twenty-some homes at eight per acre and possibly offer the applicant a different opportunity to provide homes along Horizon Park. Um, we obviously, a- and with perhaps unanimous consent of the council, we will stop, uh, we'll be allowing Robin to directly communicate to future developers that this is what has never passed council, and we will eventually have a line maybe that is successful and takes, gives us back some of our time to manage the, the development around Horizon Park, so good luck. Thank you.
Paul Belangia? All right.
Good evening, how you doing?
Hi.
Been here a few times, six oh five Scenic Path and I've overlooked Estates. So, um, I've lived in Leander about eight years, came from Houston, way too big, and we've lived in Overlook Estates about five years, so I want to voice my opinion on item number twenty-one. Uh, looks like the proposal would change zoning from SFUMH, um, to a new PUD that would be SFU two, which are basically townhomes, single-family townhomes, property in question to within a few hundred feet of my property, so it's very, very important to me. I am not in support of the zoning change, however, I'm a big supporter of growth in Leander, as I've said several times when I've gotten up here. I'm opposed to any change that negatively affects our small community and neighborhood. The proposal is, uh, to have the new PUD that would allow property owners to build nineteen units on there, which is about eight per acre now. I was here at the Planning Commission meeting last week and we, I got changed to twelve, which I thought was a positive thing. The ramifications of City Council approval tonight would set up a domino effect that could set a precedence, as most laws do. If anybody's ever been to court, they always use previous precedents that were set. The nineteen other properties are along Horizon Park, there's about nineteen other than Starlight and the one we're talking about, could follow suit by requesting a similar zoning change, allowing many, many new townhomes to be built. Obviously, that's the worst-case scenario for me and our community. Increase in traffic would be massive, a hundred more townhome, hundreds of more townhomes would change the whole landscape of the area. The result would be a very busy area versus the present quiet and serene neighborhood that I've grown to love. I know it's inevitable that change, uh, growth will increase in Leander, so as a compromise, I'm proposing a slight modification, that is requesting zone change. I suggest that, um, we allow zoning similar to, this is the SFU zoning that Starlight Village has, which is about four homes per acre. That would minimize the increased amount of people living there and only a small increase in traffic. If that happens, I'm sure that the valuation of homes in Overlook Estates community would not show any depreciation. If you approve the change as requested, I suspect that we had a lot of unhappy homeowners that would blame the City Council for that occurring. That's natural in your position, you understand that. Incidentally, I was at the P and Z meeting last week, unfortunately, not enough people voiced their dislike, so it kind of got to a seven to zero approval. So I'm requesting City Council to decline the zoning change and keep it at SFUMH. I would like to see P and Z Commission and the City Council adhere more closely to the city's comprehensive plan. Any changes to that plan should require unanimous vote from the Commission and City Council. Thanks.
David Frank?
Good evening, my name is David Frank, I live at one zero zero three Overlook Bend in the Overlook Estates. Um, I'm against this proposed zoning change because it really doesn't fit into the character of our, our community and, and the neighborhood here with having eighteen-plus houses, uh, and as Cliff had mentioned and, and, and so forth. We've been here probably four times in, in the last year. I've, I've been living in this area for about a year plus now, and I'm just a new neighbor, and all of a sudden I'm getting a, a new appreciation for zoning and, and all that other stuff, but this really is an abrupt change in the character of, of the neighborhood, and I really think that you guys should consider voting no at the way this is currently proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Lance Wilson?
Good evening, my name is Lance Wilson. I live at six oh one Scenic Path, which is right on the corner of Horizon Park and Scenic Path, and so, um, as you can imagine, I'm really aware of the noise and the traffic, and I moved to Leander because I liked the fact that it was less dense and almost a country feel. We spent a lot of money on those houses and we think of it as a tranquil place, serene, and, um, and a, and a nice investment, and of course, what we worry about are the things that you worry about, the things that we hear about and have concerns in regards to the density, traffic, the lowering of property values, and providing, um, such a dense, uh, number of households in a small parcel of property that could change the, the surrounding landscape. And so I ask you to vote against it, and thanks once again for all the support in the past for, um, trying to keep our, our neighborhood, or preventing it from becoming increasingly dense. I mean, this is, I think, the third time I've been here since the, maybe the last eight months, um, voicing my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to close the public hearing and we're going to move to discuss and consider action regarding zoning case nineteen dash Z dash zero zero six.
Ms. Parker?
Okay, um, Robin, I just want to make sure my calculations are correct. Okay. Per acre, let's just get some numbers out there, per acre, um, with the current zoning at single-family urban, um, there can be up to six homes per acre, right? Because I did forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet divided by seventy-two hundred, which is the minimum size.
You also have to think about, um, building a street.
The street.
Right, because you, it's plotted as one lot, so if it's single-family urban, you can have.
So you would take away the, that portion?
Right, so you have to calculate that and then detention, um, so it's probably closer to four, four or five units per acre.
Four or five units, okay, because I was just looking at that to see how big a difference it would be between the townhomes and then the, uh, you know, the single-family urban. And, but, single-family urban manufactured housing, so it's also the same with the manufactured housing, so they could put, um, trailer homes on the, the lots, right?
Yes.
In that case, that many in there, five.
But it still has to be plotted as individual lots.
Yes, individual lots.
Right.
To put that on there.
And the difference with this one is it's condo, so there are no plotted lots.
There are no pl- so it's going to be that condo regimen, kind of like what we have behind Randall's right now.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Shaw?
Motion to deny.
Ms. Cannon?
I have a couple of questions. I just pulled up the transportation map and I see that Horizon Park is designated as a collector road. Can you please tell me what that is? I know it's not built as a collector road, but it is in our plan.
It's, it's in the future, uh, in the transportation plan. Are you asking for the dimensions of the right-of-way in the pavement section?
How, generally?
I would have to ask Wayne or look at the map.
I see that it goes from Crystal Falls Parkway all the way up to North Line when it turns into Melmahtis.
That's correct.
So it is in our future land.
Absolutely.
Use as a collector street.
Right.
A major road. Um, on the PUD that was attached with this, I didn't see the change of eight units, maximum of nineteen units, is that?
Right, so, um, what you have in your packet is their original submittal, they made the change at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Okay.
Right, so if you did approve it, it's something that'll be updated by the second reading.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree that this is going to be a tough one because it's, uh, this is going to set a precedence where, just coming from this type of work and working in land development before, um, you're going to see a lot more of this type of stuff, and I think it does make a lot more sense at some point if somebody's able to kind of get a couple of these lots together and do some type of assemblage to, to bring it together and make it a cohesive deal rather than a bunch of hodgepodge nineteen unit or eighteen unit or whatever it is. I think that that's, uh, it could create a problem, and without knowing when the road's going to get done, that's also another concern, so, um, I have my concerns here. I'd like to let Councilwoman speak first before I.
I was just a little confused, is the motion still on the table or does it need to be renewed?
Yes, Wayne.
Then I have no further comments, I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second for denial, all in favor? All opposed? Motion to deny passes six to one. Right. Item twenty-two has been postponed at the applicant's request, so we're going to move to number twenty-three. Going to conduct a public hearing regarding comprehensive plan case nineteen dash CPA dash zero zero two. To amend the comprehensive plan, land use category from neighborhood center and mixed-use corridor to commercial corridor on one parcel of land approximately two-point-three-eight-five acres in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcel R zero three one two two four, more commonly known as ten-nine-ninety East Crystal Falls Parkway, generally located three hundred feet to the west of the intersection of Ronald Reagan Boulevard and East Crystal Falls Parkway, Leander, Williamson County, Texas.
This is a, a public hearing for a, um, comprehensive plan amendment for the southeast corner of Crystal Falls and Ronald Reagan. This is just one lot off of the corner, it's currently located in a neighborhood center, and the applicant is, um, requesting to change the designation to a community center. They are proposing a zoning change as the next item on your agenda to allow for general commercial. The neighborhood center designation does not support general commercial, so if it is switched to a community center, then it can be supported. The council did receive a development proposal review petition on July eighteenth, and the council approved the petition, um, to move forward with this process with a six to zero vote. The city is starting the process to update the current comprehensive plan, um, but staff felt like it was appropriate for them to come forward with their request so we don't hold them up while we're trying to straighten out our plan. Um, the commission did recommend approval of the request with a six to one vote, and, um, I'll be available for questions after the public hearing, and the applicant is also available for questions.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to close the public hearing and we're going to move to discuss and consider action regarding comprehensive plan case nineteen dash CPA dash zero zero two. Ms. Parker?
Public, okay. Um, I just have a que- so we are planning on updating that whole node, is that gonna, is that the foresight here? I'm not saying that is definite, but is that the foresight here, that the whole node, because it'd kind of be silly just to do this one if we're not going to do the whole node?
So when the, um, neighborhood centers were adopted in twenty fifteen, the idea was as the city grew, we did an update, those centers would be upgraded as development warranted it. In this situation, one property owner's come forward with the request, and, um, it was our understanding that the council didn't want us to initiate, um, Future Land Use Pla- Future Land Use Map amendments without the owner requesting it, because we're about to go through this comprehensive plan, so that's why it's kind of awkward right now.
Yeah.
But I think when we do. But I think when we do the update, it would be that quadrant at least.
Yeah, that's what I would think, too. It looks like an area that would probably be who, just changing the whole mode.
Absolutely.
So, okay, all right. That's the only question I had.
I have nothing.
I'd just like to point out, sorry, I'd like to point out that the hard corner already has some, both of those two parcels directly to the east already have some large kind of industrial buildings on it, and I just wanted to remind everyone of that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item twenty-four, conduct a public hearing regarding zoning case nineteen-Z-016 to amend the current zoning of interim SFS-2-B, single-family suburban to GC-2-A, general commercial on one parcel of land approximately two-point-eight-five acres in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District parcel R-031224, more commonly known as ten-nine-ninety East Crystal Falls Parkway, generally located three hundred feet to the west of the intersection of Ronald Reagan Boulevard and East Crystal Falls Parkway, Leander, Williamson County, Texas.
This is a public hearing for a zoning change for the property located at 10990 Crystal Falls Parkway. They are requesting the GC-2A zoning district. This is a general commercial use component, and that would allow for large to small-scale commercial as well as service retail uses. The future land use map has been amended, so it's now in compliance with the comprehensive plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the request, and I'll be available for questions after the public hearing, and the applicant's also available for questions.
All right, so now we're going to move, we're going to close the public hearing and move to discuss and consider action regarding zoning case nineteen-Z-016. Ms. Parker?
I'll motion to approve. I'll second.
I got nothing.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. All right, so at this time, we're going to move to our regular agenda. Item twenty-five, discuss and consider action on the second reading of an ordinance regarding zoning case eighteen-Z-035 to amend the current zoning of TF-2-B, two-family, two-PUD, planned unit development with the base zoning district of CH-2-A cottage housing on one parcel of land approximately zero-point-nine-four acres in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District parcel R-578189, legally described as one-point-five acres out of Lot Seven of the Leander Heights, Section Two, Lot A, Final Platte, Leander, Williamson County, Texas.
This is the second reading of the Castella Court PUD, and we did get the development agreement that was in question from the last meeting.
All right, Ms. Parker?
I motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six to one. All right, move to-
Five to.
Where is the second? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Sorry. Five to two. All right, we move to item twenty-six, discuss and consider action on the second and final reading of an ordinance levying ad valorem taxes for the use and support of the municipal government of the City of Leander, Texas for the fiscal years 2020, providing for and apportioning each levy for specific purposes, providing when taxes shall become due and when the same shall become delinquent if not paid.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize, but we, I committed a procedural oversight on the budget item that state law requires two motions on the budget. So I spoke with Ms. Sands, and if, before we take action on this, if we could reopen number nineteen to hopefully take care of that other motion. My apologies. Reopen number nineteen.
Yeah, so reopening nineteen.
And it's the motion number one, the motion-
So I'll make a move to ratify the tax increase reflected in the proposed budget.
I'll second.
I will also make a motion to approve as well.
Great.
Do we need another second?
Catherine had a second.
Okay.
Okay.
So, right, so we're, me the first, her the second, I think Catherine. All in favor? All right.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and sorry for that oversight. The proposed tax rate, as mentioned, is fifty-four-point-one-eight-six-seven cents for one hundred dollars, the decrease of one cent from the current rate. The maintenance and operations portion of the tax rate is thirty-one-point-nine-eight-six-seven cents, and the debt service portion of the tax rate is twenty-two-point-two cents, for a total of fifty-four-point-one-eight-six-seven.
Ms. Parker?
Well, I'm glad to see you again.
There's one.
Okay, I'm excited about this. I think this will be the second year in a row we've gone below the effective rate, and then it's like three years in a row. That first, two years ago, we were actually at the effective rate, and then the last two, two years below it. And I think that's, that's great, that we're working that hard on that, and thank you very much, Robert.
Thank you.
For working on this.
The growth around here has been phenomenal, so we appreciate everyone's hard work on that.
Thank you.
Well, heck, I'm glad you're up here, too. That's it.
Got one more item.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Did I understand it correctly that we're the only city in this area that's decreased our tax rate?
No.
No? Who else in our area? Do you know offhand?
Well, I know our neighbor to the south slightly decreased it, very slightly.
Not to the effective rate of-
Not to the effective rate.
No, 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 no.
Okay, so that, I guess that was my question.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Actually, I don't know.
Thank you for clarifying me.
I don't know what the surrounding-
I'm very proud of y'all. I mean, it's very hard to run a lean ship. I'm, of course, very proud and wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Just want to say your team is always phenomenal.
We put the numbers together, the other departments do the work, so appreciate that, though. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, she made a motion, so I'm going to second the motion. So, all in favor? All right, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, twenty-eight, discuss and consider approval of award of contract to Half Associates for comprehensive plan update consulting services for one-hundred-ninety-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty dollars? Did we skip twenty-seven? Oops, sorry, twenty-seven? Sorry, discuss and consider action on an ordinance, get back up here, Ron. Amending ordinance number eighteen-057-00, which adopted the annual budget of the City of Leander, Texas for fiscal year 2019.
Thank you. This is our end-of-year budget amendment to take care of the current fiscal year where we have overruns in certain areas, and we take this opportunity before we close the books in the fiscal year to appropriate those accounts that are short. This is a comprehensive, it covers all the different funds. Each fund needs to end in a positive balance at year-end, so some of this is projecting the next sixty to seventy-five days as invoices and expenses come in that'll get accrued back to this fiscal year. So not all of these numbers are hard and fast. We err on the side of making sure that the appropriation is sufficient to cover the expenses. This is not authorizing the expenditure of the funds, it's just making sure that the budget is sufficient to cover where we've had overruns, or we've had projects that the council has approved, or we've had projects from last year that did not finish last year and rolled into the current budget. So we take this to you annually about this time each year to make sure we're in good shape when the auditors visit us in November. Happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Parker?
No questions, I know.
Some questions?
I have a quick question.
Okay.
So these amendments, I didn't see a running total of what it is, but my question is, are the funds there from 2019's budget? Or is this going to set us back going into this coming year's budget?
No, it does not set us back. All of the appropriations are either backed up by revenues being greater than anticipated in the current year, or they were unspent last year because the project didn't finish, so they're, they need to be re-appropriated out of the fund balance into the budget line. So it's, the money's, absolutely the money is there.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Did you even have anything else?
It's just a very interesting read. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Thank you.
All right, passes unanimously. All right, twenty-eight, discuss and consider approval of an award of contract to Half Associates for comprehensive plan update consulting services for one-hundred-ninety-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty dollars, and authorize the interim city manager to execute any and all necessary documents.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Our next step in this process for you to update your comprehensive plan is to discuss and determine award to Half and Associates that received high score after evaluations were completed by city council. At our last meeting, the last time we discussed this, you did authorize staff to negotiate a contract for the specified services as outlined in the RFQ with Half. City council further directed staff to seek line item pricing for city branding services as part of that resulting contract. We learned in our discussions with Half that they don't offer city branding in-house. That would be something that they would outsource, hence that is not a part of this evening's contract. They do and will provide plan branding. There's a difference there in that they will brand your process and their outreach to Leander residents, but in terms of city branding, that's not a part of this scope. Additionally, through our lengthy conversations over these past months, Old Town, although not a highlight of the RFQ scope of work, it was discussed that it may be an appropriate focal point during the planning process. Half has offered several pricing options as additional plan elements. Perhaps as your project ensues, you know, you may choose that or other areas to deep dive, to use a term that Half has used in our negotiations. You have that flexibility, and that backup is included in your packets this evening should you opt for that. But those additional services are not a part of the contract as it's being presented. The half timeline for completion of your comprehensive plan update is presented in the contract as twelve months with a price of one-hundred-ninety-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars. I have Mr. Jordan Maddox here. He's a team leader with Half. He's here to answer any questions, as am I. And we do have one slide that staff felt important to present this evening, as we do have new leadership on the dais, new leadership on staff, and this is a big project, lengthy one. We want to clearly expectation set for everyone involved as to what the half deliverable is, and that your comprehensive plan is a guiding document that outlines your high-level goals, your economic development objectives, and your aspirations for community development. That is what you will be provided and what you'll be working on. Those additional supporting plans, those deep dives, those other initiatives are for future implementation as determined by the plan or as determined by department recommendations. And those other plans, many of those appendices can be viewed on your comp plan page of the website. Those are your detailed, orderly, and predictable plans of action with specific directions that shape policy. So there's your high-level document, and then those supporting very detailed plans that are in support of that, and we felt that important to highlight this evening. So I do have Mr. Maddox here, should anyone wish to speak to him. Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Ms. Parker?
Yeah, Mr. Shaw. I have a bad feeling this is going to balloon out of control. We're already one-hundred-and-ninety-eight, this is outstanding, outstanding work. I just got little red flags are saying this is going to go through the roof as we start à la carte and stuff on there, so I'm just uneasy with this.
I have a question for Half. Well, I'm sorry, Joy, sorry, can I ask you a clarifying question? When we did the comp plan, they're done every five years. When we did it five years ago, we spent, correct me if I'm wrong here, around a hundred-and-fifty-thousand, just under that.
Correct.
And our population was forty thousand or so. And so it's been five years, and this is coming in fifty thousand dollars higher than what we paid last time, correct?
Correct.
Is there anything that was done five years ago that is at the same price?
You know, we did discuss that. Of course, service prices increase over time, and you know, the pricing's going to change with varying firms as well, so there's a lot of moving pieces to something like this, and you hope for the best price possible, and this is the best price that we've been able to negotiate.
I also believe, just to add in there, that in 2017, 2018, or 2016 anyway, since the last comp plan, we annexed over eight thousand acres. So we're also quite a bit bigger than we were five years ago.
Larger scope.
I just wanted the rest of council to kind of be aware. Councilmember Shaw, don't be uneasy. All right, can I ask? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I was very interested in the Catalyst scope, so now I'm very concerned when we're reducing, we're pulling that back. So what does that mean, reducing the scope of their work?
We have worked with Catalyst before, and we're very excited to include them in the Leander Plan. The amount, the amount of scope that we needed to cut in order to get the fee that we negotiated with the staff required us to cut down the amount of time that they would spend on the project. We would still include them, they'd be involved in engagement, they would still provide an analysis. It would just be at a lower level of detail with a fewer amount of time than we initially anticipated when we came for the interview.
Can you remind us just overview of what it is they're bringing to the table?
Yes, they're an economic development consultant, so they look when we are doing physical planning for comprehensive planning, we're looking at action plans, we're looking at implementation. They will run a cost analysis on certain components of that to determine whether it's feasible for the city to grow in the way that the community desires, and also whether that's something over a long period of time that can be sustainable.
And those were some of the things, such as road maintenance, and is that correct?
Not quite at that level of detail.
No, okay.
Just more thinking about growth and growth capacity and where certain levels of growth might occur.
Okay.
So in order to, you know, integrate transportation planning, utility planning, and service provision in those areas.
And so by reducing their scope, what are we going to get?
They would still be part of the process, they would just be, they would, like I said, less- They would just be, they would, like I said, less detail involved in the actual plan and a little bit less time in the engagement than we initially anticipated. And that's something that can be restored. I understand there's some discomfort maybe with the price. We can add some of their scope back in there. We have not negotiated a final scope with Catalyst on our side, but it is something that if we wanted to increase some of their hours and their participation in this process, we can still do that.
As we get into it and see something that maybe council wants more detailed information?
That's possible. We could look at that, contract amendment.
Thank you.
May I actually share councilmember Shaw's same concerns there? I think I brought them up earlier too, just without being knowledgeable in this area. I just want to make sure staff has what they need, and we need, we're getting a great deal, right? Negotiate deals for a living, and I'm going, man, do we, you know, I know that the education between a RFP and RFQ for me is an important thing as far as how this one got handled. And so, I just want to ensure these were a couple of major things, like Old Town and what we're going to be doing down there. The worry is, yeah, that is a major area for that, and so, we might as, I mean, we all are already considering that amount being stacked on, and then we said about Catalyst, that was a major reason why, why we had, why I think we scored you so high as well too, not just your track record, but also the partnership there too. So, you know, I'm, I want to see us move forward because I know this is an important process, but I just want to make sure that we're doing the best job of ensuring, you know, for the residents that we're actually getting the best deal for them too, and actually getting what's necessary to make sure we have a great plan because we can't mess this one up. If it was our choice, we would love to restore the full amount of the Catalyst scope. We've, as I said, we've worked with them before, they've been a great partner, had a great reputation in the cities that they have worked in. So, we would, we would love to see their, their full scope. We were trying to work with the staff and look at some of the budget constraints that were in place, and so, that is why we had to take some of them out to an extent, but we'd love to continue that conversation with the council either now or in the future if that's desired.
Hey, I have a couple of questions for you. So, on your background analysis, it says you're going to review and incorporate baseline demographic and socioeconomic data from the U.S. Census Bureau and other sources as may become necessary. We all know that the last U.S. Census was like ten years ago, so what are those sources that you're going to use?
The Census has the American Community Survey, which is updated every three years, and it has a little bit more involved data than just the ten-year census. The Census also does population projections every year. It's likely that the staff also has some numbers on building permits and looking at population as well. So, what we like to do is combine as many sources as we can. Campo, Water Development Board, Census, as many population projections and demographics that are out there, we like to look at those and figure out exactly which ones are most optimal to use.
Great answer, because even when you said they, you know, do the mini one every three years, I'm thinking, three years ago, we were like fifteen thousand less people.
Yes, yes.
And then, further in, when you have the area about the stakeholder focus groups, task five point two, you outline a lot of groups, but what I didn't see in there is how you're going to include residents that aren't connected to a larger group, like an HOA or a committee or anything like that.
We list ideas for certain stakeholder focus groups when we do scoping, and then when we sit down with the staff and the council, we decide which groups or which individual people might make up a certain group that could have the best conversation about where the community wants to go. So, these are simply suggestions at this time, and the exact makeup of those focus groups will change as we start this conversation.
Great. I would love to see some representation for people that don't participate in some of these other groupings. That's awesome. And then, we had talked in the workshop with y'all about the outreach piece, that we have a considerable number of residents who don't have access to online. I don't see that listed here. I believe you guys have talked about maybe knocking on doors, but all I'm seeing here is online public survey and social media outreach and open house public meetings.
Yeah, knocking on doors is not typically something we do, but we, in most communities, we will work hand-in-hand with the staff, particularly Public Information Officer, to figure out some of the best methods of reaching the community. And in every community that we work in, there are some people who don't have access to social media, website, and so, we do work with them to say, well, what are some of the other methods in neighborhoods that can be reached? We like to reach out to school districts as well, try and reach kids there, but knocking on, knocking on doors isn't, isn't one of our typical outreach.
Not a good use of staff. Maybe like a bilingual postcard or, like, what are some methods?
Sure, that could be discussed. There's a whole lot of different ones that we try and work with the staff in the particular community. We do postcards, we do flyers, we do mailouts, we work with the library and the school district. We try and get as many things out there, those that are the more traditional methods, and then some of the more modern ones as well with social media and some of the other applications out there.
What about the local food pantry?
Food pantry, I'm not sure that we've done that, but we'd be open to something like that.
Awesome. Thank you very much. That's all I've got.
Okay. Can I go ahead and?
I haven't said anything yet.
Oh, you're going to go ahead and ask.
But I'm going to make a motion to approve, so that's all I want to say.
All right, well, I'd like to ask a little bit about the Transportation and Access Master Plan, Access Management Master Plan. I'm wondering how detailed you're going to get with that, because we had discussed we really would like a good comprehensive transportation plan to adjust to all the extensive growth we're going through right now. And so, I'm wondering how deep you're going to delve into that here.
For access management in particular?
Well, transportation and access management.
Just generally transportation.
Yeah.
So, we would look at this level with a future land use plan update, looking to make sure that all of the existing roads and future roads support that land use, and we would look into certain kind of primary corridors to look to see if there is some access management challenges that need to be addressed in the future, and we would identify those and make some recommendations in the action plan as to how to achieve that. But it wouldn't dive into the specifics of exactly how it would be defined as far as an access management policy. That would be something that would be studied and modeled in a little bit more detail with speeds and separations and amount of traffic that might be coming out of certain driveways and certain land uses. That's the deeper dive for transportation. But we would look at certain corridors that might be candidates for good access management studies in that next step, and we would make recommendations as such for those.
Okay, because it sounds like to get the detailed transportation plan, the big one, it would take hiring on another, okay, okay, good, good. I just got a little nod, that was, that was all I wanted to know. Thank you, thank you.
I'll second, but I have to say something. I kept waiting for you to say we're getting half price, but you did.
What can I say?
More questions? First and second for approval? All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
All right, item twenty-nine, discuss and consider action to authorize staff to notify property owners of the proposed renaming of County Road two seventy-nine to North Baghdad
Well, now that the Baghdad North roadway project is substantially complete, we would like to go ahead and rename Baghdad Road from, which is actually, is County Road two seventy-nine from Waterfall north to, through the city limits. So, what we're doing here is we are, we will be notifying the fifty-two affected address points of a, when the council, of the address changed and when we would expect it to be before council. And so, we would request your authorization to notify property owners of the proposed renaming of County Road two seventy-nine to North Baghdad Road.
How much should approve if? I'll second, I'll second, okay. I want to say thank you. It's about time that a single road doesn't have four names.
Yes, ma'am.
My comment is actually going to contradict yours, because why are there so many Baghdad roads, including South Baghdad, North Baghdad? Why can't we just call it Baghdad? And that's not a criticism of you.
Well, I know, I know. Well, you know, we've got Baghdad Street right out here.
Yes, which is different from South Baghdad Road.
And what, Leander used to be called Baghdad, I believe.
Indeed, yeah. But why can't South Baghdad and North Baghdad? Why must there be division? Why can't it just be Baghdad?
Now, you're getting into the weeds of addressing and so forth, and I will be glad to have Sean Lafferty give you a presentation.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. All right, item thirty, discuss and consider action on ordinance amending Article one point oh three of the Code of Ordinances to amend rules governing public comments at city council meetings, adopting rules of decorum, providing a severability clause, effective date, and open meetings clause, and providing for related matters. I believe councillor Cernick?
So, this is actually, sorry, this is actually something that we were working on as part of our council rules and procedures, and I expressed this at our briefing session as well too, but first, I'll apologize for anybody for us taking too long. We just wanted to get this thing right before we got it out there, and so, I know there's been a lot of comments about not getting this information in time as far as to everybody in the public, so both myself and, you know, and Paige, our city attorney, take responsibility for that, but in no way are we trying to be non-transparent with this. So, this was, the reason it didn't get presented at the last meeting, we believe that there was some things that we just, we weren't okay with on the language, so that didn't get presented as part of this. So, this is in, I guess, in conjunction with what we did last, last, last meeting. I'm here to answer any questions. I know now that we have, now we have this document in front of us, I know there's going to be different feelings about it, but ultimately, what we're trying to accomplish here is, the city council, as my understanding, and when I ran for office, this was a business meeting, and so, I really believe that this should remain a business meeting, and so, this is in the spirit of continuing to keep it a business meeting too, with other ways to reach out to us and other ways to get things on agenda. So, I just want to be very clear about that when, as far as the spirit behind proposing this ordinance change.
We do have several people signed up to speak. Again, when I call your name, you have three minutes. Please provide your name and address. Mary Higgins Beck? Hope I said that right.
Maybe this will make it a little easier for the Hinks to Beck. In German, it's Stallions Brook, but a Dutchman told me it's horse's mouth, so it could be worse. So, first, Troy, I want to thank you for talking to me on the phone yesterday and telling me your thoughts about the ordinance, I know you were very busy. What I am concerned about is I think before you take away the public comments that are not related to the agenda item, that you put something in place, like town hall meetings, so there is a mechanism for people to come and express their concerns. Oh, I didn't tell you, I'm sorry, I always do this. My address is one six zero nine Lyons Den. But anyway, I think that's important. You could put something in place, and after you have that in place, then you could take away comments that were not on the agenda, but I don't think you should take it away before you have a mechanism in place. And there is a difference for, in terms of, yes, I can email you and get individual comments, but it's different if I'm talking to all of you, and it's different for other people to hear what I'm saying. So, that's why I'm suggesting a town hall. My other concern is that if I read it correctly, and I might not have, you know, but my understanding is that if there were two agenda items that were a point important to me, I would only be allowed to speak on one of them, and I don't think that's right. Did I misunderstand? Is that true?
No, I think I'm also asked for pages of interpretation of that as well too, so I don't believe that anybody should, if you have multiple things to talk about on multiple subjects, maybe not talk about the same thing two times, but I'll go back through and make sure that.
Yeah, because, I mean, you could have two things on your agenda that, that I want to, you know, so I'd have to, would I have to fill in two comment cards then? Well, you could, you could address that later, but, so that, that's it, and I appreciate your time. I know you're trying to make it so you don't have five-hour meetings, but please keep the doors open for the community to talk to you. Thank you.
I'm Stephanie Burkew. I live in, on Champion's Corner in Leander, and I would like to start just by saying that I think this item should be postponed till another time. As the rules of procedure that were agreed upon at the last meeting on September fifth, all items submitted after the deadline or that do not include required background material will not appear on the agenda. I don't feel that ordinance amendments are a time-sensitive issue that the mayor can waive that, and that was rules of procedure B three A. Rules of procedure B three B that you agreed to last meeting, background information on the agenda that consists of, at a minimum, a written explanation about the purpose of the agenda item and any additional relevant information or documents. The proposed changes of a city ordinance constitute relevant information, and that was not received by the deadline. In fact, I requested on September fifteenth, I believe it was, or fourteenth, to see what those changes were. I understand they were not available until two thirty or three today, and I reached out again today about that, and I have submitted the, my email and the responses I got to be on record, but I never actually got the ordinances from anyone on the city council. I did have a friend that requested them also, that forwarded them to me, and as of five thirty, I know they were still not on the city website. The other thing I would like to add is that I have a friend that had requested to speak as a public comment at the beginning, and also on thirty, but did not realize that there needed to be two cards, and she has been told that since public comments closed, that she is unable to speak. So, that's limiting her talk on a non-agenda item, and I would ask that you reopen public comments to allow her to speak. That's all. Thank you.
Anna Nguyen.
My name's Anna Nguyen. I live at seven six oh three, Catun Tail Cove, Austin, Texas, seven eight seven five zero. First, I would like to address the points that councilman Cernick make about the effort that the council made to be transparent. As you have just heard from Stephanie, the proposed amendments weren't available until late, and then not to everybody, so on the count of your effort to be transparent, I will have to give you an F. That's not good enough. Now, obviously, you don't answer to me, I don't live in Leander, but you answer to these people behind me. Also, the second point about how when you ran for office, you expected this to be conducted like a business meeting, and that's a problem with a lot of business people who runs for public office, and that is that they and that is that they confuses running businesses with being in an elected position. When you run a business, the people who work for you, work for you. You don't work for them. When you're an elected official, the people who elected you don't work for you, you work for them. So a city council meeting is nothing like running a business. You tell the employees what to do. You don't tell the people of Leander what to do. They tell you. They elect you. Now, they elect you. I don't, because I don't live in Leander. But I just want to point that out to you. And as far as the proposed changes, that's the issue of the First Amendment. The Constitution is there not to protect the majority, not to protect the powerful, not to protect the popular or the elected. It's there to protect the minority, the poor, the disenfranchised, the oppressed, those who don't have a voice. So when you can change the ordinance, keep that in mind, because the First Amendment is there for you and for everybody else as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Tegan Retscher.
Hi, Tegan Retscher. I'm at 2105 Emerald Isle Drive. Putting this item as last on the agenda is an obvious and cowardly effort under the dark of night to take away people's ability to address their representatives. The public has only had a few hours to respond to this. It's not a coincidence or unfortunate happenstance. This was a deliberate attempt to take away the public's voice before we could even read the thing. People have work, they have lives, and are waiting to, and waiting to release this until a few hours before it's been voted on and vote on it this late at night is underhanded. If this is really a good ordinance, then give people a fair chance to read it and give you their thoughts. Stop trying to silence people who don't agree with you. You all ran on the promise of transparency in government, and you promised that during the election. This is subverting the free speech of the people. It's un-American. There are people in here, I know at least two of them here, that did not get their card in in time. I have seen these people change the hearts and minds, and if I can give my two minutes to the people that have not had a chance to bring in their comment card, it's not going to waste any more time. They can have my two minutes. Can I donate my two minutes to someone else who did not have a comment card?
No.
Can we open up public comment for more? Can we open up public comment for more people that have not had a chance to put in a card?
No, I'm sorry. We, we turned.
Chris, can we open up public comments so that more people can speak? It's in the ordinance. More people are allowed to, to speak if they.
Here, here's, here's what we got, guys. Okay, nothing. Am I allowed to speak freely right now, too?
My three minutes are up. It's yours.
Okay. Mayor, may I speak freely?
Well, I think you need to explain what happened earlier with the other lady who left.
There's one woman that left that didn't get her card in. She had mistaken her, only nine of her I see part of the law when she was hearing to speak in the open public. She spoke with her and advised.
My sincere apologies. We spoke to her and advised that she could put it into writing. I would share it with the council, and we would list it in the official record. The other individual I spoke to that completed two items on the card and didn't complete the card correctly. She had a number for an agenda item at the top, and so it was placed on that agenda item, not noticing the other part down at the bottom. Though, that was not, I sincerely apologize, and I told her the same thing. She can put it in writing. I'll share it with all the council, and we'll list it in the official records of the amendments.
Okay, and the very least, can I ask that this be postponed until the next meeting? We can table it for now and let people have a chance to read it, to be able to come and bring in their cards and to speak on it, because this whole fly-by-night, just having released this a few hours ago and then expecting people to drop everything that they can to come down here on two hours' notice is absolutely unacceptable. I know that this took you a long time and you worked very hard on it, and there are some parts on it that I think are absolutely commendable.
Retscher, your time is up. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, next is Ellen DeKinga.
My name is Ellen DeKinga. I live at 1126 Iron Horse. As I spoke last time we met, I am a teacher and a Girl Scout leader in the community. Next week is banned books week. It's one of my favorite weeks of the year because I can talk about censorship and not seem weird. You see, no one wants to have their voice censored, but many want the voice of others censored. Just look at social media. At the last city council meeting, you specifically addressed censorship of its members. There was quite a lengthy conversation about what can be said, how it can be said, who can say it, and in what form it can be said in. Ultimately, you came to a consensus as to what the rules would be. It was not unanimous, but that's hard to do when someone is trying to limit other person's ability to share their thoughts and ideas. As a citizen concerned about the story of Leander, I found last meeting's discussion to be a positive step. As city leaders, you handled the concerns in a collaborative and restorative manner. You let go of previous grievances in order to move forward for the best interest of Leander. It was a story of unity in Leander. This week, I see on the agenda an item to change the city ordinance regarding public comments at the city council meetings to address time limits and requirements for public comments, location for signage, and rules of decorum. In the agenda, it says the ordinance is forthcoming. As of 5:30 PM tonight, no further information had been posted to the website, which was the only information I had. I am also aware that Ms. Burkew emailed city council members to obtain more information on the proposal. There are various responses, but none of them with information about the proposed changes. Last council meeting, a citizen spoke to this very thing and explicitly requested that the public receive two weeks to review changes to city ordinances and the opportunity to address their concerns with the council. I expected to see that on tonight's agenda, but didn't see it. All the public is asking for is its information on how you intend to manage city business and the opportunity to respond to it. The people of Leander are not trying to disrupt your peaceful life or force you to endure utter nonsense. They are wanting to be partners in building a community for all of the residents in Leander. I am asking that tonight, you, you table this. Don't do anything with it. Give the opportunity to review it, and that we can explore all options and give the citizens the two weeks to review it that was asked for previously. I also ask that you put that on the agenda to discuss the two weeks' notice and use it so that the, the community can address things that matter to them. By doing this, we perpetuate a story of Leander that is collaborative and does not have the appearance of censorship, and that's what I ask tonight, is that we just hold off until people have time to review.
Jessica Cooper.
Down to short person level. Slightly less nervous than last time. My name is Jessica Cooper. I live in the North Creek area of Leander. I am here to speak on this. I feel it does need to be tabled because we did not have enough time to review it. At the last meeting, I remember Councilman Shaw speaking about something called Smart Code. I'll be honest, I knew nothing about it, and going, going in, and I still only know a little bit that I could Google, but what I do remember from his comments, though, was how Leander was the only one who had it, that everyone around us did not, and if you looked it up on a map, it would just be us, the one red dot on the map. And this sort of occupied my thoughts in regard to this attempt to regulate comments from the public because if you do what you intend to do and remove public comment on non-agenda items and limit our time further if there are too many people signed up to speak, you will set us up to be that red dot on the map, surrounded by people who do not have that in place. You will set Leander apart from our neighboring cities as being a place that limits free speech and that values the comfort of city council members over the voices of people you represent. If I am willing to sacrifice my time out of my day to come and speak to the council, I expect to be heard, and I expect to get my full three minutes. If you have that many people coming to speak to you, then perhaps you need to be more efficient and transparent in your intentions so that we know what is happening in enough time to actually address it with you outside of the meeting if we can. This change that is being proposed is an example of trying to push something through that has a major impact on citizens and their ability to be heard without giving them time to review and communicate with you what they wish. I realize this is a volunteer position, and I respect that you have taken that upon yourself. But you did take it upon yourself, and that may mean that you wait until 11 or 12, that you are here until 11 or 12, hearing the people that you represent. If you want things to run more efficiently at these meetings, then you need to act accordingly and be more efficient yourselves. I ask that you table this item and wait until we have a chance to thoroughly review it and have time to take the best course of action. I heard, I hear what you say about how you expected this to be a business meeting, but part of the business of running a city also involves dealing with us. And so that means that you do, we do expect you to listen to us. You represent us. You represent what we wish for our city. And I also need you to hear that part of representing us means that you represent the social issues that matter to us, and that there are times where we are going to wade into social issues that might be, make you uncomfortable. But we expect you to hear us because those social issues matter to us, and they matter to our society. So, thank you.
Annette Sonsler.
First, I want to say thank you. I can't imagine the magnitude of how much that you guys volunteer for our city, and I appreciate each and every one that you do. You guys always come very prepared and know what you want to ask, and I very much appreciate that. I do, though, agree that this should be tabled. Also, like, having to turn your card in prior, for me personally, I'm not a big fan of coming up here. So if there's 20 other people who do, I prefer to just check my position and say I don't want to speak, and then I can turn it in as the 20 other people are saying the same thing that I would say, where now I kind of have to stand up here and speak versus just logging my vote. So I'm not really on board with that part. And I just feel that we do need more time to review what has been set forth to make sure that everyone has a chance to be heard. Thank you.
All right. So.
There's one more person. He has his hand raised.
Uh, he didn't have a card. Look, it's not a matter that we, we, we have a responsibility to the woman who left that we didn't let speak. That puts us, I need to consult with our attorney.
Yes, so the, the woman who, she left because she was unable to, to speak on a later item.
My apologies. She had intended to speak during the citizen, the open part, the citizen comment at the beginning, and her card was improperly marked, and we had already passed all of that, and it was later in the agenda. And so I spoke with her, and she was fine with putting it in writing. It would be shared with the council, and her comments of what she wanted would be stated in the minutes stating that it was submitted to us in writing.
It's within your discretion to allow it at this time, given those circumstances, and then, I think, build some specific rules around the process for going forward, is what I would suggest. I think we should address that in whatever you are going to consider on these rules when you consider them.
Okay, so I have the discretion to allow this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm gonna allow one more speaker.
Thank you all. I really, really appreciate that you did that, and very good of you to, to hear me out and to hear me imploring you to do, because this is really important. This is the fundamental, it's not just a free speech thing that we're talking about. Oh, sorry, thank you. John Handy Bosma, 1917, Cross Draw Trail, Leander. So the reason I couldn't come earlier is because there's another government that really influences our family's life, which is the LISD, and they've totally screwed up their computer system so badly. It's a, it's a nightmare. So I had to spend five hours tutoring my daughter for an exam tomorrow that we didn't know that she would have, and so this government, I can say, is a lot better than how that government is working right now, although it's a good school system, and I generally support good governance. Appreciate all that you're doing. I just want to say, this is not just about free speech. It's about something much more fundamental that I talked to you about when this came up before in the, in the, in the First Amendment, which is redress of grievances. Redress of grievances. Now, your staff has done some really fine work to address many of the issues with the earlier version of this. However, there's a more fundamental issue that I was trying to get across to you before. You actually spent 10 minutes asking me questions about this after, right? And that is the relationship of the citizen to the government. The most fundamental right we have with regards to our government, as opposed to fellow citizens, is to seek redress for our grievances. Where we have a problem with something in our government that isn't on the agenda, and that's actually the history of city councils and village councils and so on in New England. When our country was formed, you could look it up. There are law reviews, articles about this, about that fundamental freedom to go to your council elders and tell them the problems you're having because there is no agenda. There are a bunch of farmers in a small, with a small village right there. And so this right is in the First Amendment for a very specific reason and put in there by people who understood. It's not about running the government according to a plan that people have. It's about people have a complaint that you might not be aware of, that might not be on the agenda, and then they come and they tell you their problem, and then you decide to figure out what to do to try to help, for the government to help that person. That's a fundamental right, and that's the basis behind all of the other stuff about the First Amendment. And so when you have an agenda that's formed ahead of time, and you can only talk about those topics, redress of grievances is not part of that. We have no other forum where we can directly address you to resolve this. And I think the rest of this is eminently fixable. I'm not in favor of rules of decorum. I think it's all very reasonable. The staff has done fine work, but if you would please just table it, there are ways to make this actually work so that you meet your needs and the needs of the citizens to try to at least get our issues out there so you can understand what happens in our daily lives that you influence. Please just wait. We have things to tell you that are important.
Thank you. Serge Hassan.
Jason Shawn, 1825, Wolf Dancer. So at 6 o'clock, I started watching the briefing, and as I was 6 o'clock, the item that we're discussing today still wasn't on the agenda. As y'all proposed in your last council meeting, there would be supporting documentation. There was simply just a few sentences out there that didn't tell the, the people of the city what's going on. We've got to get that addressed. I understand that it was a late situation, but as mayor, you have that opportunity to pull the agenda before we even get started. The second part of my reason why I'm here, I actually hadn't even planned coming this evening, but part of this is to give the people the chance to look into what we're discussing. The second part of it is to give y'all a chance to look into what's being discussed. Tonight, a council member made a statement towards the end of the briefing session that there were four cities. There were San Marcos, Hutto, Georgetown, and Fort Worth. They currently do not have citizens' comments. That council member also made a statement that they found it within five minutes of a Google search. Guess what? of a Google search, guess what? I found the same thing within five minutes. Those four cities allow citizens' comments. Now, they may be a little bit different than what we do, but they allow their people to speak. So I don't want to be the red dot like she spoke about. I want to allow our citizens not only to speak on an agenda item, but to get up here and speak their minds when they have that opportunity. It really frustrates me that you continue to try to take things away from our city. Really frustrates me. Y'all need to get this right and give the people a chance to speak their mind. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm gonna start off and then I'm gonna go down here, just supporting information. All right. So House Bill 2840 is effect, was effective on September 1st, 2019. The bill amends the Texas Open Meetings Act to provide that a governmental body shall allow each member of the public who desires to address the body regarding an item on an agenda for an open meeting of the body to address the body regarding the item at the meeting before or during the body's consideration of the item. Before the passage of the bill, the public had only the right to observe rather than speak at an open meeting of a governmental body. In regards to other cities, the ones that were just mentioned. Start with San Marcos, right? What's the purpose, right? To ensure that meetings of the city council are conducted in a way that allows the business of the city to be effectively conducted. To ensure that members of the public who attend meetings of the city council can be heard in a fair, impartial, and respectful manner. To ensure that meetings of the city council are conducted in a way that is open to all viewpoints yet free from abusive, distracting, or intimidating behavior. To ensure that the rules governing decorum at meetings of the city council are understood by persons attending the meetings. But rules for the speakers are that they speak during a public hearing on an agenda item. San Marcos. The mayor or chair will make sure that a citizen's comment is of general importance to the city and its operation. The mayor or chair will also make sure that council and staff will not discuss a citizen's comment unless it is related to the agenda or requires clarification for procedural The mayor and chair are also responsible for ensuring orderly conduct of participant during city council meetings. Georgetown. At Georgetown, you are not allowed to speak on an item that is not on the agenda at that meeting. You may ask that it be put on a future agenda. That exists. If we pass this, every council member up here can add an item to the agenda. One council person. One council person may do that. So the ability, I'm sorry, we've already...
I have a question.
I'm sorry. It's not a back and forth with the audience.
I need to clarify what I'm saying, but I don't have a question about, and I need to...
I'm sorry, ma'am. It's not allowed. Thank you. The idea, when this whole started, was A, we were spending seven, eight hours at council meetings, right? So we started looking at different cities, what they were doing. At that time, that was before the legislature just amended this ordinance. A lot of cities at that time were going away from public meeting, or public comments at meetings. Any type of public comments. I've spoken to the Williamson County Commissioners who have changed their rules and they limit public comments to 10 minutes total. So the whole thing takes 10 minutes. I've also heard from them that they are going to limit it to agenda items only. The idea that a, that a citizen cannot redress their government is absolutely paramount to what we're doing. You have the ability to do that. A citizen has the ability. If we're doing something tonight that is going to affect you, you have the ability to address your government regarding what we're doing. You also have the ability to reach out to any of us as Mary did. I called Mary. Mary emailed me. I called her. I talked, I spoke to her about the item. And I believe you, Jennifer, had also emailed me. I answered you right back and I said, "Please give me your phone number and I'll be glad to call you." I did not get an answer till this meeting started. So you and I didn't have a chance to talk, but the...
Change with your other...
I understand. I'm just saying that the ability to consult with your elected representative is out there. What this is, is doing the same thing that other cities are doing. This is a business meeting. We are here to do the people's business. We are here to do things that are on the agenda. You have the ability to request from any of us that something that is not on the agenda be addressed. And by our charter, we, if one person asks, it goes on the agenda. So you have the ability. Ma'am, it's not a back and forth. I'm not gonna ask you again. So the citizens have the ability to do it. This is a business meeting. So at this point, we are doing the same thing that cities around us are doing. The same exact thing. So I'll start down the line. Ms. Parker?
Well, I should have written down some no's to get, to get my thoughts in order because I could go in so many different directions, but I mean, you all, we all know when we got the information. That's not a secret. That's not a malicious intent to quiet anybody at all. It is an attempt for people to get it right because it's important and to get the ordinance written right. I have no doubt about that and I don't need to make any phone calls to find that out because I know the people up here and I know the intent and they're good people and they're honest people and they're fair and they're trying to do something to take care of the city and the citizens. So with that said, everything that y'all have said tonight is very important and it also doesn't change my mind at all because I was already going to ask that we postpone this. So I appreciate the fact that things are being talked about, but I don't want y'all to think that just because something, you may have an appearance of something. I would ask that expect the best, don't expect the worst. We're not evil people. It's just not that way. I'm sorry to disappoint you, but we're not. We are wanting to do the right thing, which was my campaign motto, was to do the right thing. And I stand by that. And that means everybody. And it was also to honor everyone. Do the right thing, honor everyone. I don't care who you are, what you do, whether we agree or not, you are to be honored and I will stand by that. And you don't have to carry a sign or a pitchfork or anything else to do that because I'm gonna do it anyway. So with that said, I appreciate that we are doing this and, you know, I do have the print out now. I would like to look at it. I appreciate the intent. I have no doubt about the intent whatsoever. And with that, I will ask that we take some time, get this right, and readdress this at a later date. I don't think we have to set the date, but...
If you table it, you must set it to a date certain.
Okay. So can, do we have time to get it for the next meeting? Is that the October 3rd, 4th?
The current draft is ready for review.
Okay.
I think there's some typos which we can fix, but for the purpose of having the council review and having it posted on an agenda that's available to the public with those typos being fixed, it's, it's ready for that.
So to make changes to it, we, we would do changes next time to vote on approval or we can make the changes next time if we, if we don't agree with the way it's written?
Correct. You can have whatever discussion you feel like you want to have, that you're ready to have tonight, give any direction that you may feel like you want to give, or you can table it and wait until the next meeting to do so. That's within your discretion.
Okay. Yes, Chris?
I'll second your motion if you made a motion.
Yeah. Help me with the motion.
A motion to table it.
A motion to table it to determine the language at a later date.
Until the next meeting?
Until the next meeting. October 3rd.
I'll second that.
Just as far as my comment, what you guys are making first and second is, not that I disagree with that at all, but why would we not at least talk about it to make sure that as we're going back to, why would we waste the time right now and not at least communicate what our, if we have any issues with what we did read?
Because we got it this afternoon and don't know what's in it.
Well, some of us have some comments, so let's...
Yes, yes. And we can do this in a, and it's appropriate to do it now because we have a court and we have a meeting. My opinion on it is I'm very concerned about the citizens not being able to have that, that beginning time because everything that we do up here, we set the agenda. And then Troy approves it, you know, approves the agenda. And I think that when we have those public comments in the beginning of the meeting, that's the only time that the citizens get to set the agenda. And they get to come to us and tell us and inform us of their concerns. And we don't always know everything that's going on out there. I don't. And I'm grateful that they come here and if they take the time to come out to this meeting and sit in here and come before us and speak for three minutes to express a concern, I want to hear that. It's important enough for them, it's important enough for me to hear. And so I would like to, if possible, keep that in there. And, and there's some other things. And I'm also concerned because I didn't get to read through it and I know we got two extra emails in addition to that with some more background on it. So definitely, I'm all for pushing this off and reading over it really well. Not blaming anybody for that, that's just the way it happened to make sure that legal things were done correctly and, and what was put in here was, was legal. Also, I'm a little bit concerned, I know that some, there was some discussion here about, about another city, maybe Georgetown or another city that has the citizens come forth to put things on the agenda. The problem is, we're kind of that roadblock too. The, I'm not sure that that would work very well because the mayor approves the agenda and what if they, you know, they were approved out of it? And then they have to come to one of us to put it on there and what if they can't find a city council member to put it on there? I would much rather leave it to where they can come to us and address us with their, with grievances and, and we get some really good positive feedback sometimes too. And I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad that people take their time. It means much more to me that they come here in our meeting and take that time to come tell us some good positive things. So, so that's where I stand on this. I want to read it over a little bit more and those are just a couple of the things that concern me right now.
I haven't been ignoring you. I've been out of town. I've been busy with this as well. I want to get offline about that town hall because I absolutely want to get them to start getting the truth out there because there's too many lies and there's too much information, misinformation that we need to squelch. We need to silence those that are just flat out lying about stuff. So offline, I'll get with you and we're gonna work on that.
I just have a couple of comments. First, I want to thank you, councilmembers, for working on this. This is all, again, very difficult, takes a lot of time. And I think when we're referencing this as a business meeting, we, I don't, I don't know if anyone really cares about all the boring stuff on the agenda, but for the last three months, we've had our tax rate that we've been discussing and researching and spending tons of hours, our budget with staff, that's not something that we just get, look at, and vote on. I mean, we're deep diving into this. We're looking at making sure we are effective with every tax dollar. These are major business issues and, and we need to make sure that we're focused on the priorities of health, safety, and welfare. So that's one thing. The other thing is this House Bill 2840 is brand new and I just wanted council and citizens to know, we're doing our best to interpret it, but this, this will probably be a living document. As other cities are bringing lawsuits or whatever it is they're doing, we'll be watching that, we'll be getting advice from our attorney. So just keep that in mind. This is a living document. Also, with the new laws, September 1st, and the schedule put on staff to get certain items reviewed in 30 days and then on planning and zoning and then in front of council, there's no way that those agenda items could be published two weeks in advance because they're at planning and zoning. I don't even know if that's possible. So we all get it at the same time except for those 400 pages in the packet meeting. We're getting on Friday and we're spending our weekends deep diving and then meeting with staff on Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday. The other thing I'd like to point out, I, our staff is here at 8:00 in the morning on Thursdays or earlier for a lot of them. So they're putting in 16, 17-hour days. So if there's a way for us to be more efficient and yet still have an avenue for citizens to communicate with us, I say why not entertain it? I like the idea of the town hall. And yes, citizens can speak on multiple agenda items. They have to fill out a card for each agenda. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, just, I mean, just in summary there too. This is, I absolutely will stand behind my comments about this being a business meeting. Hopefully you understand that it's gonna take, and we have a lot of blended personalities here in a blended community where some people think one way, some people think another, right? And I think that this, in general, we are trying to do all the things everybody's talking about up here. So how do we conduct business, take, get things done, and also hear if the citizens have any, any comments too? I'm not opposed, I don't know how, I don't know how a town hall would work at some point or whatever it would be. Maybe it's like a council member or a couple of council members. I don't know what that even looks like, but ultimately here, posting, there's nothing in the law that says that, that, that all the information has to be provided. We just do our absolute best to do those things if it's my, if that's my understanding. So we have to post the item 72 hours. I think that was also something that got taken a little bit out of context here, is that we had, we had posted correctly what we're gonna be discussing right now. And, and I know that we're used to getting that stuff earlier and again, I apologize for anything that I could have done to make that, to get that. I mean, I had the thing, I had an email sent to me, but I have a job too and I'm rushing over here right, right before here to try to get here and I didn't hit, you know, respond like, "Yes, this looks good," you know? So we'll take responsibility where we can and we'll try to do the right thing where we can. And, you know, sometimes, sometimes we're gonna think about it positively when we're all trying to work in the same direction. Sometimes we're just gonna try to look for everybody, make a mistake and try to point it out and try to tear the city back, but that's not what we're trying to do here. We're trying to find a way to, to move forward as a city and I think that this would help. So I'm all for whatever, this is a council decision, so I'm all for whatever council wants to do here. I just, I'm putting my best foot forward to try to accomplish something positive for our city right now.
Okay. Couple of comments. As far as House Bill 2840 goes, that was, that is a really weird image on the camera. Sorry. As far as 2840 goes, that was passed months ago. It was discussed by this council in July at our retreat. We took actions last month to come into compliance with it. So it's not like this is a new thing or, you know, the House bill. As far as notifications go, we have an obligation not just to residents to notify them of what's going to be on there, but to council. We received this, what, five hours ago? We need to be able to do the research on what's in it and, and figure out what other cities are doing. And so do the residents. This is something that's going to severely limit their ability to talk with us. As far as long meetings go, every time we have a long meeting, it's because we've posted some agenda item that doesn't have any meat to it and nobody knows what it is and they freak out and they come in here and they talk for hours. So I was the person actually who requested, I don't know if you know this, in the rules of procedure, which were passed, that we not have these single...
That you didn't vote for. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Do you have more comments, Ms. Cannon?
I have that on deck.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, that's a...
No. So it was my submission to the rules of procedure that we have backup into each one of the items because I'm tired of everybody being mad about it and I'm tired of walking into these... these meetings not knowing myself what's going on. It's unfair to the public, it's unfair to all of us up here. And also, just lastly, who wants to be the one to tell Karen Thompson about the comments at the beginning that she's not going to be able to make? We had an awesome comment tonight from Williamson Burnett Opportunities. All of those things need to be taken into consideration and we up here need time to deliberate the consequences of these sorts of things.
The last concern has been considered, and we have a plan for it.
Is everybody looking at me for? Look, I'm okay postponing it, I have no problem with that. The end goal is to get it right, but I don't, and I'll be glad to talk to anybody that calls me or emails me or leaves a number because addressing your government is not taken away by this, in my opinion. Talking about an agenda item is talking about what the government is planning to do to your house or your neighborhood or your community. You have the opportunity to do that. Now, if you don't show up on that agenda item and then three weeks later, you know, every single meeting you're talking about something, I'm sorry, but that's why we have agenda items and that's the time to address those with your representatives before that and at that meeting. But to relitigate things over and over and over again is not something I particularly find useful or a good use of our time. Because again, we looked at, you know, it's 10:30 tonight, which means these guys have been at it all day, we've been at it for, you know, five hours, you know, and again, you're right, we signed up for it. But are we making great decisions at midnight? I don't think so. Our city's so busy right now. We got rid of the failed policies of the past that allowed us to have very short council meetings. Things are going on right now, literally, these are all zoning items, every single one of them. You've heard tonight, they're all zoning items. Things are happening finally in this town, which is a great thing. I want to make sure we get it right, so I'm okay postponing it, and I'll, again, as far as I go, regardless of, if this changes, I will always talk to citizens about what we're doing. Everything is transparent. Ask me a question, I'll tell you my opinion, you know? So I don't see that changing if it passes or if it doesn't pass. I'm still going to reply, I'm still going to talk to you about the issues and give you my opinion. We might not agree, but maybe we can at least agree to disagree. So we do have a motion in a second.
Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
Okay. Just, this is in regards to, you know, setting the policy going for, or the ordinance going forward. You know, we've talked about how we will have numerous people speak on one item, and quite often, and this is for everyone's benefit, quite often, it is, it is a hot button issue or something that is an emotional issue and it's important. But you might have 20 people get up for three minutes and say the same thing over and over and over, and it does not matter how many times I say it's raining outside or how many times you say it's raining or if we all say it's raining, doesn't make it rain outside, doesn't make it true. So with that said, I've witnessed a few meetings where someone will get up and they'll make a very profound statement, it's an organized thought, and then they ask for just a show of hands of everyone that's with them. That is just as powerful as spending three minutes of saying the same thing over and over and over. I haven't seen that very often, but it's just, it's a thought of a way to accomplish the same thing. We've got letters here, we've got emails, those are read, they mean something to us. That doesn't mean, you know, if you want to speak, absolutely, you should come speak, and we're offering that. There was something else I wanted to say, in regards to helping us communicate truth and transparency. When a private citizen writes that the city council did X, Y, and Z, and the city council did not do X, Y, and Z, city council had absolutely nothing to do with X, Y, and Z, doesn't make it true, but guess what? 20 people are going to show up here and spend three minutes of our time, per person, about something that city council didn't do, but we are still going to listen to it. And it's happened, and it's happened recently, and no doubt it will happen again. So we're trying to maintain decorum and find a way to give you the voice that you need, make it effective, and help us be more effective in doing our volunteer work for you, because yes, we are doing this for you, and be respectful of our staff because as Troy says, they've been here since 8:00 and they've got to be here at 8:00 tomorrow morning, and I don't. So that's one of the benefits of my volunteer job is I don't have to be here at 8:00, so thank you for being here every morning at 8:00 and doing what I don't get to do, so thank you, and that's all.
All right, at this time, we have a motion and a second to postpone till when?
October 3rd.
October 3rd. All in favor? All right, passes unanimously. All right, we're going to move to comments.
I think I made all my comments, but I do want to say I miss Karen Thompson and Kat Howell tonight. It's always, always a joy to hear their stories and it just lights up my day, so I miss them, I'm looking forward to seeing them next time, and she's not sick, by the way. I believe they had a better opportunity, yeah. And that's really all I have. Thank you for everyone that came out, thank you for your comments, they are appreciated, they are listened to, so thank you.
I just want to, want to comment, there was, there was one comment tonight by a visitor from Austin, Anna Nguyen, is that your name? And I thought she hit the nail on the head about us up here and what we're doing here. We're here to serve the people of Leander, and I would just, I really serve them. We're volunteers, we don't get paid for this, we may get a free meal every now and then, free t-shirt, maybe a hat, that's about it, but we're here to serve you, and I just want to let you know that I take that seriously.
I just wanted to point out some of the numbers that the Williamson County Children's Advocacy Center had in our packet tonight, that just in the third quarter of this year, out of 207 forensic interviews, 24 were Leander children ranging from 0 to 17 years of age, and they also provided 92 counseling sessions for Leander clients. That's a huge service for our citizens. If you can volunteer there, donate there, I would strongly recommend it because they're doing an amazing job. And then also National Night Out on Tuesday, October 1st. Thank y'all for staying so late.
Yep. Really excited about National Night Out as well, and so we're looking forward to having one of the parties in our community, and this might seem weird, but I just want to thank everybody for, I believe, conducting themselves council-wise and everybody here that was willing to speak. I just want to thank everybody for doing it the right way. I think that's important, that's kind of the spirit behind these things as well too, so at the end of the day, we're going to get it right, just know that no matter what we decide, no matter what every, any councils decide, and no matter what any future council will decide, somebody's probably not going to like something. So if we can do it the right way and if we can communicate effectively, I think that puts us on top, and so that again is our, sounds like the train's coming through. So we better get home. Anyways, thank you very much, everybody.
All right, thank you to everybody for staying around tonight. As a reminder, like everybody else said, National Night Out is coming up on October 1st, so find your nearest neighborhood park or where your city is, or where your neighborhood is hosting something. Also, some of the commenters earlier today commented on what I was already planning, which is that next week at the library is banned books week, which our library always does a great presentation, sometimes we wrap things in paper or whatever so you can't see what it is. So I wanted to do a shameless plug for one of my favorite banned books, which is Animal Farm. I encourage everybody to give it a read, find the squealer, snowballs, and Napoleons in your life, and remember, kids, all animals are equal, but some animals are more equal than others.
This week, AJ's open where Shay's was, lived five years ago, and that's very exciting for our city and Old Town especially because it's the only restaurant we have in Old Town, so everybody tried to support other than the bakery, it's the only sit-down restaurant. So support AJ's. We have The Republic opening in October, that's going to be on Ronald Reagan. We have Asian Sky Fusion that'll be opening in October, that's at Crystal Falls in Lakeline, so support Leander restaurants, we're finally getting them, and let's make sure they stay here. Thank you very much. At that point, we are adjourned, the time is 10:37.